Good evening. Welcome to the February 29, 2016 meeting of the Board of Selectmen. We're expecting Selectman Semino, so when he comes, we'll give him a minute to set up, and we'll continue on with our hearing, but we need to start because of the advertised nature of our first agenda item, that being the road layout hearing, Fox Hill Drive. And what we'll do is we'll wait a few minutes for Mr. Semino, who just walked in, to come up to the table.
That's awful. Did you put him up to that?
No, I did not.
Thank you, thank you.
The only reason we started was because of the advertised.
Oh, yeah. I believe this is a joint meeting with the Planning Board. Mr. Morris, is your board in session?
Good evening. Yeah, the Planning Board went into session, according to our agenda, at 6:00. That first agenda item was to discuss the status of the 6:30 and 6:45 public hearing for the roads.
So it looks like on our agenda, we have Fox Hill Drive first, and then William Coleri Lane second. So with regards to Fox Hill, the board is in possession of a memorandum from the DPW Superintendent, which indicates that she's inspected Fox Hill Drive and has no issues that would prevent the street from being accepted by the town. The board is also in a possession of a letter from Fuss and O'Neil dated February 23, 2016, in which they indicate they have reviewed the street acceptance plan and performed a site visit as well, and based on their visit, they did not find any discrepancies between the approved plans and what was constructed in the field. Finally, we have a letter dated February 16, 2016, from the Open Space Preservation Commission, and with respect to Fox Hill Drive, it indicates that the open space set aside looked to be undisturbed on Google Maps, but that needed to be verified. So I don't know if there's been anything further with respect to that. Mr. Morris, is that the universe of information that you believe was presented to this board to review?
Yes.
Okay.
We also did a site visit on Friday, myself, Hillary, and our intern, Joe, along with the owner of the property, and, you know, we walked the open space. However, the warrant article only refers to acceptance of the road and the easements. This particular subdivision did not link the open space approval, I mean, the approval of the Planning Board did not link the open space to the road acceptance, and that's why the warrant article doesn't mention open space. And so, although I, having looked at the open space, found it to be really in exceptionally good condition, it's not part of this.
Well, let me ask you this. If it's not part of it, should it be? Because otherwise, then the open space component of this development is left up in the air, essentially, correct?
I'd have to look into that. We were looking at the specific warrant article, the plan, which I have here, that the warrant article refers to, and there's no open space on this plan. It's not shown on the plan. So I attempted to look a little while ago at the approval that was made on Fox Hill back, I think, in the late 80s, but haven't looked at that yet. And maybe before we leave tonight, we'll take a look at that to answer your question. But again, the warrant article only refers to the road and the easements, and there's two easements shown on the plan.
Could the warrant article be revised or amended at town meeting to include the open space component of this development if your research indicates that that's appropriate?
You know what I'm gonna say. Ask Town Council.
The question is, the warrant article going into the warrant, but no reference to open space?
The question is, I understand that the warrant article as written does not reflect a request by town meeting to accept the open space.
But it references open space.
It does not.
That's a substantive part of an article.
Okay.
It should be in there with its acceptance.
As a separate article?
Not necessar-- well, are you making it, are you considering it, making it part of the acceptance of the roadway article?
No, because we had been advised by you that they couldn't be combined.
What can't be combined?
That the road, the state law that gives, tells us how to accept a road, does not tie it in any manner, shape, or form to open space. So at one point, we were discussing about having an open space bond for the open space portions. That has not material, hasn't been done as a system yet for anything. So the article is written for the acceptance of the road.
And the acceptance of the open space is for the fee, the actual land of the open space? The fee?
That's the part that we're gonna research tonight.
We don't know.
We're gonna look into tonight.
Yeah.
Again, the proposed article states here that it refers to a plan entitled "Street Acceptance Plan of Land of Fox Hill Drive in Salpro, Mass., Prepared by Engineering Design Consultants, Dated November 2, 2015, Together with Drainage Easements and a Water Easement," as shown on the plan. We looked on the plan, and that's, that's the verb, those are the words that describe what's on the plan. The plan is consistent with the warrant article, and the warrant article is consistent with the plan. If you look on the plan, there's no mention, there's no open space shown. There's no mention of open space.
So there may be no requirement or nothing for the town to accept relative to the open space?
The way this is set up right now, I believe you're correct. But again, going back to the approval by the Planning Board, you know, many years ago, we'll see if this is consistent with that, and if it's not, then something else would have to be done. But it's a little bit different, I think, from my point of view, that we're using a 2015 plan, you know, just recently created plan. It's good for clarity and keeping it simple, rather than the whole subdivision plan, but normally, we would refer back to the originally approved subdivision plan. So we'll have to take a look at that.
So, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, and based upon everything I just heard, we were responsible for inserting the language of the easements in the warrant article for the acceptance of the public way, because that's the normal way we do it. That would require a separate warrant article. If it was determined that there was to be an acquisition of open space, the other problem is, it's not on the actual plan of acceptance, and that creates an integration issue.
So, Mr. Morris, I don't want to put you on the spot, but what is it exactly that you would suggest that my board do relative to this public hearing?
We would suggest that you do what we just did between 6:00 and 6:30, which is, we, the Planning Board made a motion, and it carried, to recommend acceptance of the road in accordance with the plan, the road and the easements in accordance with the warrant article and the plan. And that's what I would recommend that the Board of Selectmen do. That way, the town would take ownership of the road and the related easements. If the open space, according to the approval from a long time ago, is supposed to go to the town, we've handled those separately. In other cases, we could do the same here.
Any questions by the board?
So, again, the Planning Board did vote a few minutes ago to, four to zero. This one was three to zero, to recommend acceptance.
Motion, Mr. Semino?
Question.
Mrs. Vanna.
The article that's in the warrant is what you voted on?
Yes.
As it's written? Okay. Fine. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the Street Acceptance Plan of Land of Fox Hill Drive and recommend it to town meeting for acceptance at town meeting vote.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next item on the agenda relates to William Coleri Lane, and again, the DPW Superintendent has indicated her inspection and having no issue that will prevent the street or the lane from being accepted by the town. We also have a letter from Fuss and O'Neil indicating that they have performed a site visit on December 25, September 20, December 22, 2015. They noted that three proposed granite boundary markers were not visible and had not, and appeared to have not been installed to date. Aside from those three proposed granite boundary markers, they did not find any discrepancy between the approved plans and what was constructed in the field, and they recommended that the town be accepted as a town road in accordance with the town bylaws. We received a letter from the--
With the condition?
With the condition that the granite markers be installed. And then we received a letter from the open space objecting to the acceptance of the open space component of this because there was some mowing on the land and some disappearance of tiny shrubs, and the probable disappearance of tiny shrubs. They recommended the lawn be removed from the open space area in question, more shrubs planted to replicate the undisturbed condition prior to its being cleared, and the shrubs mulched with leaf litter. Mr. Morris, did your board vote with respect to this particular road?
We did.
And what was your vote?
The vote was three to zero to recommend acceptance. Four to zero. Four to zero, sorry.
And does this acceptance include the open space?
I'm looking for the wording in the article. Do you have it?
Yes.
Yeah, I have it right here.
Oh, okay, thank you. It's a team effort. Article 32, "See if the town will accept the public way, William Coleri Lane, all easements as described on a plan entitled 'Road Acceptance of William Coleri Lane in Salpro, prepared by Conderstone,' dated September 25, 2015." And that's the plan that we have in front of us. It does, the article doesn't mention open space, but the plan does have the open space shown on it, as opposed to the one we just talked about, that didn't have any open space shown.
So the pla-- I'm sorry, are you done?
For now.
So the Planning Board is in agreement that this road is ready for acceptance, including the open space part of this development?
If, if, yes, if the article is silent relative to the word "open space," but it refers to the plan, it does show the open space on it. And we did go out there on Friday, and the developer, Friday morning, had a landscaper go out there and mulch the area that was of concern. We did meet, there was one person there from the Open Space Commission. We inspected the area, and I was pleased and thought that it complied, and Mrs. Luttrell was there. I asked her if she was all set with it, and she said she was all set with it. So I'm not aware of any more issues relative to the open space or anything else on this road acceptance, this road acceptance plan.
What about these missing granite boundaries? Have those been installed?
I believe those are the ones that we voted to exempt them. I didn't hear. The boundaries that Fuss and O'Neil has in their letter, the developer came in to us and asked us to waive those three boundaries and gave specific reasons. One of them was in the middle of the driveway, and we changed either the location or we waived them. So Fuss and O'Neil was unaware of that, but the markers have been reviewed by other site visits, and everyone's in agreement that the markers are there, that were not waived.
Any questions from this board?
Well, I just, because the open space is shown on the plan, unlike Fox Hill, I do want to ask, it sounds like the site visit that included Mrs. Luttrell post-dated the letter that we have from OSPC.
Yes.
So I add all that up to mean that there's no one here opposed to approval tonight for this roadway.
Anything further? Yes, sir.
Permit, resident?
Sure. You need to identify yourself.
My name's Jason Malinowski. I live at 1 William Coleri Lane, which is at the intersection of White Bagley and William Coleri. I'm a little confused by the email you have from the DPW Superintendent stating that the plan was completed as filed. For approximately two years, I've been contacting the Planning Board and the DPW, the former staff engineer. There was a drainage issue at the intersection of William Coleri and White Bagley. There's a, the water pools there, the road is sloped downwards, so there's curbing on one side, and then there's a gully on the other. That water pools there and creates quite a hazard, especially in the wintertime, because our road is not currently sanded, and obviously, even when the road is accepted and is sanded, there's no guarantee that the DPW will be out there right away. When I spoke to the DPW Superintendent as late as last Friday, she indicated that there was an oversight in their review of the plan, and that there should have been a scupper installed that led and drained down into a drain that's at the bottom of my property in one of the easements. So I am 100% in favor of the road being accepted, but I think there is something that needs to be done between now and town meeting to address it, because I'm not an engineer, but when everyone went back and looked at the plan, there's this scupper that is supposed to eradicate the issue that I've been trying to raise.
One minute, I'm gonna ask Ms. Galligan to comment.
We, after we had the report about there being a puddle, we did go out and we looked last week when the two rains, and we didn't actually see a puddle, no puddle existed. I talked to, actually, I think I talked to you, and I did talk to Mr. Black, who is the developer, about that. I talked to him today. I told him that as long as we keep monitoring it, if a puddle came up, if we did end up having one there, because right now, the water comes in, and then it comes back out, so it comes down White Bagley, kind of goes into the, into William Coleri, but then comes back out. It doesn't actually sit, it might drain a little slower than it should, or than it could, but it's, I didn't see the problem once they put their top coat on. We paved, we paved White Bagley prior to them putting their top coat on William Coleri a couple of years ago. We paved White Bagley a couple of years ago, and then they put their top on last year. So we didn't see a problem. If there is, ends up being a problem, prior to town meeting, it will rain enough times that we'll be able to see and check, and I did get a commitment from the developer that he would, he would then try to do something, which, as there is a scupper shown on our plan, we, the town, is not responsible for the drainage system on William Coleri when it's accepted. It stays private, but they do have a big, long drainage swale, which actually is for stormwater, to actually kind of treat the stormwater, and as long as the water gets in there, it'd be better not to circumvent any of it with a scupper, which then doesn't treat it. So that's, if we can keep it the way it is, and if there is no puddle, great, if the puddle, if we do end up coming across it, and obviously, people can just call us when they see it, because over the two rains last week, we did not, we did not have any standing water.
Did the Planning Board address this missing scupper?
It might--
I never heard about it. I'll ask the rest of the board.
No, it was only, I only, when we reviewed the plans originally out on site, we didn't notice that it was missing. When we found out about the puddle there, we did check to see if it was there, but the thing is, is that according to the developer and the set of plans I have, I don't know what the actual subdivision approval plans, I'm not 100% sure they were the same ones, because the developer said there's no scupper on the plans that were supposed to be built. So at this point, I thought he was gonna be here. Oh, there he is. Sorry. So I don't, I don't think it's actually missing, because there isn't a puddle, and I think it was all graded out appropriately.
I have pictures from last week. I know where.
Well, so you don't believe the scupper is missing?
Well, the developer doesn't think the scupper's missing. I need to confirm that the set of plans I have is the most recent. I only found out that he didn't think there was a scupper today, but the thing is, is that even if there is a puddle, that can be dealt with prior to town meeting, as long as it's dealt with, I don't see any reason to stop the acceptance, and it is private.
Clearly, the puddle exists, okay? We have a resident who lives there, sees it, it's a safety issue. Can you get a commitment from the developer to have, to ensure that it's corrected before town meeting?
Yes, if, but we have to--
Communicate that to the resident, please?
We just have to see where it is to make sure what the appropriate action is taken to get rid of it, and I haven't seen it.
All right, so the, you know, the gentleman has photographs?
Right, well, and that's just it. He can, we, next time it rains, we'll absolutely be out there every time, make sure we do the right thing. It's useless to do something that's not gonna work.
Right.
And the developer has committed to that, if necessary.
Sir, are you comfortable with that answer? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
I'm sorry?
Yes, ma'am.
I just may be opening a can of worms, but I wanted to check on this, since I'm taking minutes for our version of the joint meeting. The gentleman was Mr. Malinowski? Did I get that right? You mentioned that for two years, you've been trying to reach the planner, or did you mean the DPW director?
The former town planner. I left her messages, never got calls back, but she would email the developer, who would then email me, and we tried--
Sir, if we're gonna have a dialogue, we just, if you wouldn't mind using the microphone. Thank you.
So all my communication was directed to the former town planner?
Okay, because you're hearing all the four Plan, the Planning Board members tonight are saying, never heard it.
Clearly, the process is broken.
Yeah.
I have the emails that she forwarded to the developer, raising the concern about drainage, that go back, like I said, one to two years.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we've made progress tonight, all right? I hope, right? We have, on live TV, okay, we have, it'll be in the notes, both for this board and the Planning Board's notes as well.
Mr. Semino?
Mr. Chairman, I move the Planning Board, I'm sorry, I did that last time.
It's okay.
Last time they were here.
It's perfectly fine.
I moved that the Board of Selectmen approve the Street Acceptance Plan of Land for William Coleri Lane, formerly referred to as Reservoir View Estates, and recommend to town meeting that they vote to approve the same, obviously, subject to a satisfactory resolution of the drainage issue we've discussed tonight on the record.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I would just like one comment, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank the Planning Board, our town planner, as well as Open Space, for having a, and for working collaboratively here. I understand this one was not perfectly clean initially, and there was some mowings that took place, but I want to commend the groups working together, along with our residents, to, you know, there is, has to be a sense, semblance of reasonableness with these things. You cannot always return some open space to exactly how it was once it has been disturbed. And, you know, I would like to just thank everyone for, you know, having that sense of reasonableness and ensuring that this thing was done satisfactorily to everyone.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion with the Planning Board about town meeting articles. First bullet point is Killiam Farm, acceptance of open space. Mr. Morris?
There's, the reason that the Planning Board wanted to discuss this tonight, because the open space at Killiam Farm does contain some farm debris, and we've had discussions about this when we were putting together the warrant article and discussing moving the open space to the town. The approval by the Planning Board, the condition of approval was that the open space would go to the town of Salpro. Even though the subdivision is fully built and occupied, that open space still remains with the developer as the owner. And so it's time to move ahead with that condition of approval from years ago. So the appropriate thing to do would be to have the town accept the open space through a warrant article, and that's what we've drafted. Because of the presence of the farm debris, the question came up as to whether or not the town would feel comfortable in accepting that open space, or at least that portion of the open space. So another option, well, one of the, one of the options would be to bring that warrant article to the townspeople at this town meeting, and then if it doesn't pass, if it passes, then the town takes the land. If it doesn't pass, then the condition of approval would have been attempted, in that the, the land was to come, come to the town, we took the appropriate measures to have the town accept the land, but the town didn't accept it. So then what do you do? It goes back to the, it stays with the developer. So part of that discussion was, well, maybe-- So, part of that discussion was, well, maybe some, some third party would be interested in accepting the open space, so that the developer wouldn't have to hold on to it, and somebody, and the town wouldn't have to take it, but another open space entity may be interested in, in taking it. The town planner reached out, and I believe that found a, a third party that would be interested in, in accepting the land. So, having a, a discussion with the town council this afternoon on these steps to make sure that we followed the proper procedure, I know from the planning board's point of view, until some action is taken to either accomplish the condition of approval, which is to have the, the town take the land, until that action is taken, or some other action is taken, then the matter remains open. So another way to do it would be to have the, the developer, the current owner of the land, submit a request for a modification to an approved subdivision. And that modification, the request in there would be to change the language in the approval from "the open space shall go to the town of South Row," it would be "the open space shall go to," and then it would be someone else. Or it would remain in, in the, in the current ownership. So, discussing that with town council, it may be, if we decide to take that route, if that's an appropriate action, then it would probably be appropriate to pull the article, and then just move ahead with a public hearing, see if the developer was willing to do that, and then do a modification. We haven't gotten to those steps yet, as far as I know, but that's part of the discussion tonight.
How old is this development? In other words, when was the subdivision approval approved?
It's all a blur to me, but I think it was about 10, at least 10 years ago.
Okay. And you indicate that there's some farm debris on this land that was a farm?
Right.
And the developer was required to return the land to the town in the condition it was prior to the development?
I'm not sure if that's the, was the language of, of the, of the requirements. It was, obviously, it was, it was a farm, it was a farm before they built the Mass Pike. Lot of this land abuts the Mass Pike. Some of the, we can see on the other side of the, of the fence that there's, there's debris there from whatever goes by on the Mass Pike, rusty cans, 55-gallon drums all rusted out, car parts. But on, on our side of the fence, there's similar materials that we went over last spring. And the, the current owner went in there and cleaned up all the areas that we identified. There were car parts, pipes, drums, different things that were, that were dumped there. And they cleaned them up. But at the time that we did it, I think it was in June, poison ivy was like a carpet in there. And, so when we went back, we agreed, when we left in June, that we would go back after the foliage all, all went down, and we could take another final look before we get to this point. And sure enough, when we got, went back there and looked, we could, we could see more clearly other areas where there were still some cans, pipes, and then there was an obvious mound, which appeared to have been dumped there many years ago, because there were, you know, pretty mature trees growing out of this mound. And it looked like there were, there was some roofing materials in that mound. There's no, to our knowledge, there's no known negative effects from that, as far as like contaminated soil or groundwater, but nobody's, nobody's really done a thorough inspection of that.
So, is it your board's position or opinion that the open space is not appropriately, or is not ready to be accepted by the town?
I think I'll, again, we had a meeting a couple of months ago with town council, and, open space, and I think Mr. Purple was there for a while, and we, we talked about that. And, you know, there's the, the extreme end of it, which is if there's any, anything there that's not organic, then we shouldn't accept it. And then on the other end, you know, it's a farm, and everywhere you go around town, if you look out in the back, there's, there's always farm debris. And unless there's, you can point to a specific contaminant, or, you know, issue relative to the environment, then it's probably okay to accept it in its condition. So those are the two ends of, of the, the level of comfort for accepting it. And I think town council has more experience with towns accepting open space that were former farms than, than we do, and, you know, we listened to his advice. And that's what kinda, you know, if we get to this position where we're not sure, well then maybe there's someone else out there that can, that is willing to take this type of open space. And again, I said, I told you that town planner reached out, I was actually on the phone with her about an hour ago, and so she's fully accessible, and she can share with us her discussion with that third party, to see how viable it would be to pull the article and then do a modification to the subdivision.
But the town initially was going to be the beneficiary of seven and a half acres of open space under the approved subdivision plan?
Right.
Now, it's my understanding, the seven and a half acres may or may not be accepted, but in any event, it could be accepted by a third party. Does the town therefore lose the benefit of that seven and a half acres if it's accepted by a third party?
When you say the benefit, you mean as far as being open to the public or the neighbors?
Or the open space part of it, yes.
I suppose we could work that out if we had, if we were, if we were going that route with a modification, then we would strive for language that would allow the neighbors to continue, continue to go on to the open space and use it. There's different types of open space there. There's a portion of it that's actually mowed, and the kids use it as like a football field. There's other parts that are kinda upland wooded, very densely wooded and very rugged parts. There's also a detention area and a stream. So there's, there's different types of, you know, open space there, as, they comprise the seven, seven-plus acres. But it seems like the neighbors, I mean, unlike some of the other open space, I mean, this open space, you can see that the, the neighborhood kids are, someone is going in there all the time. There's a lot of evidence of people being in those, in that area. And from what we've heard from feedback from the neighbors, they, they use it and they like it.
Mr. Cipriano?
Mr. Chairman members, first off, this is traversable open space. There's an access to that open space. This just isn't vista or buffer, it's traversable. The original intent of all open space under the bylaws was set aside, just to ensure that if permitting was given, special types of permitting were, were given to subdivision projects, that in effect, there would be a protection of open space. Now, this issue has come up, and we have now, twice in several years, checked status of the property with the Department of Environmental Protection, and there is no indication of any environmental event anywhere in that area, whether it's the subdivision area or this adjoining open space. However, there was debris, farm debris found, and that is not unusual in the farm sites in South Row historically, but it was, I think it went to town meeting and there was an issue, so this was, my understanding was, it was removed. But as the chairman just indicated, apparently additional debris was found when foliage fell in the spring. The discussion that was had with town officials in the, in the fall, I should say, was that since this, the whole theory of open space is set aside, that if it would not be palatable for the town to accept it because of some more debris on the site, which may have a chilling effect at town meeting, I don't know, but as long as it is conveyed or transferred to a third-party land foundation, an app, a, a nonprofit land foundation bona fide, then that would serve the same purpose. The one thing you don't want to happen is to leave it respectfully with any developer, because what happens then is the, it's technically his property, or her property, or its property to have to pay taxes on, then they won't, then we go to a tax-taking, and then we have to make a determination if we're gonna do a tax foreclosure. A long process that costs money of no value. So I thought, leaving the meeting in the fall, that the best option was to have it conveyed to a third-party land foundation in lieu of the town. You get the same benefit, however, as the chairman indicates, to do that, there has to be an amendment to the actual original subdivision approval. And that's really a pro forma ministerial thing. It would just change it from going to the town to a land foundation, and the, the planning board would also have the opportunity to put further condition on it as they chose to ensure that it was protected as open space.
Doesn't that set up a, a situation whereby a developer agrees, when they are preparing and submitting their subdivision plan, they're agreeing to return to the town seven and a half, 7.5 acres of open space? And then when it comes time for that return, if the open space is not in the condition of the town, that the town wants it, the owner says, "Well, we'll just give it to someone else then."
I absolutely don't disagree with that, but I think the issue historically has been that no standards were set of how to accept it. It was a set aside. There, there was no condition or discussion, respectfully to the planning board, about, "Well, we're gonna go do a site survey, and as we're approving your plans, and make a determination if there needs to be cleanup, and we're gonna put in there that you're gonna clean it up," or whatever it might be. None of those things were done, and it really wasn't in the focus of, of the town at the time, as far as I can determine, because the focus of the town was to protect open space. And that was created by bylaw changes somewhere in the 1990s, in anticipation from master plan and studies that were done by the town in the 1980s. But you're right, that, that i- is an issue, in this particular case, it's, it's far beyond any valid enforcement, unless they're willing to do it voluntarily, which they did, because there's no condition set for that. So they, we said it has to be cleaned up, they did, and apparently more was found in the fall.
So, Mr. Morris, you know, this, this is strikingly, or it's, it seems to be getting strikingly similar to the Barn Lane discussion we had not too long ago. And as a result of that discussion, I prepared a, a step-by-step proposed procedure about accepting open space after the subdivision was completed, and I sent that, I believe, to the town planner in September of 2014. Was that ever advanced at all with, did she ever advance that with your board in terms of trying to get a process in place that would tighten up, if you would, the inspection and the review more contemporaneous with the end of construction, as opposed to a decade later, when we're talking about that? Was that ever proposed to the planning board, or was there ever any action on that?
The answer to the first question is yes, it was, the drafts were submitted to the, to the board for our review, and we were watching and hoping, and there were meetings held relative to it and discussions, but it has not, obviously has not been finalized, because what you had submitted was a part, was, was excellent, and it was a portion or a part of the whole open space program.
Mm-hmm.
In this case, I mean, Mr. Cipriano is, is right, there wasn't a whole, whole lot of time spent on, on this at the time that the subdivision was proposed. There was a discussion, strongest discussion back then, if I remember right, was whether or not it was gonna be a flexible development or a conventional development. And this, this subdivision went to a flexible development, where they, the road was shorter, the frontage was smaller, and the houses were closer together, leaving more open space. There were discussions about farm debris, and there was farm debris all over the place, most of it was cleaned up in order to do the, to do the construction. They also went in and, and did do some removals initially, and then now here, years later, last spring, the developer went back in again and removed more stuff. So, it, it was discussed, but I guess looking back at it, you'd say, "Well, it should've been nailed down before the planning board approved the subdivision." And it wasn't. But quite a few things have happened since then relative to open space and the, and the way that we handle the creation of open space.
Has the developer been contacted and requested to, for lack of a better word, clean up this open space such that town meeting can make an informed decision on the seven and a half acres, whether or not to accept it?
Yes. Town planner contacted the developer and asked him to go back in and clean up those other areas, along with the discussion of the farm dump, which was there apparently for many decades. And the, the, if I remember right, the response back was no, that it was all done, and that he had no intention of excavating what appears to have been some materials that were dumped there decades ago. And I think that, at least based on my experience with these type of sites, that there're no, unless there's a specific contaminant that's associated with it, then it's to be left alone. You also have to remember that not too many feet away from this, these materials on the open space is the Mass Pike. And so if there were any type of contaminants encountered in the wetland, in the open space or in the stream, you know, it could be traced back to a, a source on the other side of the, of the fence, relative to something that happened on the Mass Pike. And that's why I think we go back to what council and his experience has been, is you tend to leave it alone, unless a specific environmental hazard is identified.
Mr. Simeone?
Yeah, so, a basic, well, two things. First of all, we don't quite have Barn Lane here, because Barn Lane had a willing developer and a willing town ready to accept, and it had neighbors who wanted to stand in between that. This is not quite that scenario. The, the basic premise of this whole discussion is the town may have difficulty voting to accept? Is that why we're even talking about this? And, and if I heard correctly tonight, the, the, the open space is, well, I wouldn't say it's in great condition, it's not dangerous, it's in use, it's accessible. What is the, what is the premise for the presumption that town meeting would not vote to accept this land? Why are we talking about this?
Well, I think if the land, if it was described to the townspeople that the land was pristine, that there was, there was no-
Well, I just said, I agree that it's not.
No debris. So then anybody, anybody else, if it's not, then people may be concerned that we're accepting land that would eventually cause, cost the town money to clean up, if a contaminant was identified downstream, or-
Okay. But as best we know, that, that, those conditions, if they existed, existed long before the approval of subdivision? As best we know?
Right.
Okay, that's fine. So if, if the town on that basis doesn't wanna take it, then I think we are back to trying to find an alternative where some, some third party will take it. But I'm not sure what, how much further discussion we really need to have.
Any further questions in the board?
The land is landlocked anyway, so coming back for a modification to the plan, there'll be no development there anyway. It's landlocked.
There's access to Richard's Road by foot, but you're right, it, it, it couldn't be developed.
Right. So a modification would really be the easiest way.
Right, and that's why we put it on the agenda, was to see if, if we wanted to go forward and have this aired out at the town meeting and voted on, or if we just decided to look into pulling the article and looking into that third party. We haven't spent a lot of time on that, because we really haven't had a discussion after we, we, the town planner identified a possible third party that would take it. We don't, we just, we didn't have the time, and we didn't wanna spend the time until there was some, some type of- there was some type of traction from town council, from the Planning Board, and the selectmen, to go in that direction. So that's why we put it on the agenda. It's a discussion, we can go either way, and it would seem to me that if we take as a homework assignment to go and look into that, talk to the current owner, see if they're willing to do a modification, and if they are, then contact the third party to see if they're willing, they're still willing to, still interested in taking it, and then have all that homework done, hopefully, before town meeting. And if that can be accomplished, then we would launch into a modification, public hearing and so on, and pull the article. If not, then the article should probably go forward and get voted on, so that we can accomplish the condition of the original approval.
Have we ever done this with a third party before?
Not this third party, but other third parties, so.
Not with, it's gone directly, it's gone, subdivisions have gone directly to third parties when we did the approval. Not all, not all the open space that the Planning Board approves is voted to go to the town.
Do they receive, does the, would a third party receive title to that land?
Usually, yeah.
In the granting of that title, would restrictions be placed in any modification or amendment regarding that it, you know, its current state, any future state, and, you know, could they ever sell it, or would that be a restriction as well?
We've had them where there were restrictions that it couldn't be sold, and there's other, I believe there's at least one other pretty good-sized parcel, where the condition was that the land foundation or third party could sell it, but they could only sell it to another similar organization.
Would this be, would land like this be granted at no cost to a third party, or is that third party paying for this?
It could go both ways. But I think since the developer agreed to transfer the property to the town under the original subdivision approval, that approval did not include the town buying it, so it was going to be turned over to the town for free. So you would think that that may be the same case to a third party.
But that's, I mean, the concern is, the town is losing something. It's losing seven and a half acres of what could have been open space. I mean, maybe at the end of the day, if the use is there, and it's generally going to be no different than had the town owned, I mean, maybe there's no loss to the town, but it seems like the town is losing something, if we just give it, and then they also have the right later to sell it to another party.
Well, that would be part of the negotiation. If there was no comfort level with having that provision, then we'd negotiate that out. I mean, it's, there's so many different ways to handle the many different types of open space. All the things you're talking about, Mr. Kalinda, are on the table. But again, we have to go back, first step is to go back to the developer to see if he wants it. "No, I want to go, I want the town to vote on this." That's his right. Or, "Okay, I'm willing to do a modification, and tell me who the third party is." And then we find the third party, they start to discuss, we start to talk about conditions. And I think if we have the same successes we've had in the past with other third parties, that the concerns that you have, and the neighbors may have, would be included, would be covered by the transfer.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Any further questions in the Board?
The vote of the Planning Board? Did you take a vote on this?
No.
Article?
No, no, we wanted to have it as a discussion item tonight, so that we would, I mean, if everyone was pounding on the table saying, "We want to pull the article," then, but I think, what I'm suggesting is that the Planning Department, the Planning Board, probably me, would, you know, take it as the homework assignment to go and contact the developer, check with the former town planner as to who she spoke with as a third party, and see how far that takes us.
Mr. Gillespie.
Freddie Gillespie, I'm a member of the Open Space Preservation Commission, and I've seen the plan you had done, John, for a process, and one of the things, our Open Space Preservation Commission has drafted one up as well, and looking forward, one of the things you do when you're reviewing a subdivision that has an open space component, is you check out the land ahead of time. It's standard procedures in all of these open space subdivisions, so you know what you're looking at beforehand, so you don't take the area that's the farm dump. But that ship sailed on this case. The problem here is that, it's not a, in my opinion, I've seen it, I've taken photos, and if I knew it would have been helpful, I would have brought them tonight. It wasn't, you know, just a farm dump where the farmer puts some things. Historically, as it became more difficult to dispose of chemicals and metals and other materials, asbestos, farmers sometimes, and I'm not saying this happened here, but sometimes they would say, you know, "Come on back to my back forty and dump your dump there, and, you know, I'll take a hundred bucks," or whatever. So what this appears to have been was not farm debris, but there were specific areas where you could see what appeared to be a truckload of car parts, mufflers and engines and exhaust systems, another section that appeared to be torn-down building debris, a truckload full, another section that appeared to be fifty-gallon drums rusting out. It was a whole hillside that goes down to a wetland and a stream that leaches, that leads to the Sudbury River. The fact that there's been no report just means that no one has said, you know, traditionally reports are when, say, a tanker dumps and dumps oil into a stream, and then that gets reported. These old farm dumps usually only get reported when a situation arises where there's a problem, and you don't know how long it takes for these drums to decompose, rust out, and leach their materials, if there was something in them. The fact that DEP regularly goes down the Sudbury River and takes water sampling, and when they find a problem, they'll go back upstream until they find the source. I've seen them do it on, even with dog waste, they've gone back upstream to find out where it was dumped.
Could I just interrupt for one minute? If we could just try to focus on this particular issue here, in whether or not, let me ask you a question.
Okay.
So open space, in favor of accepting this 7.5 acres of open space, you recommended that town accept this?
Can I give you a two-part answer?
Well, it seems to be a yes or no question, but if you-
Not at this time.
If you could give me an answer which includes a yes or no, that would be helpful.
Not at this time.
So when you, you are, open space is recommending that the town not accept this open space parcel at this time?
We felt there was too much liability potential for the town, but there were ways of either testing it to find out if there, there hasn't been a test done, so we don't know for sure. If you test the soil and the water, that would be a level of comfort.
Who pays for that? I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but who-
I don't know. The point is, who pays for it if the town takes it? Once you own it, you have the liability.
I'm not, no, I'm not trying to engage in an argument with you, but if you're saying the town is not, you're not recommending the town, it's not ready to accept it, then there, that means, at least in my mind, there are certain steps that need to be done before the town may be ready to accept that. One of those things you said should be done is an inspection of the site. I just don't know, if we just kick that can down the road, is that ever going to get done?
Another option we suggested was just carving that section out and accepting the rest of it, or the modification, but these things haven't, the different alternatives have not been thoroughly investigated to the point where, is there a third party willing to take it? That's a real viable option, if there is one, because the town historically has given the open space to a land trust, and then you can put a, because the bylaw requires it permanently protected, you put a restriction on it, the town gets the same benefit by not owning it as they would if they owned it, if the right things are in that restriction, which prohibits subdivision or building. Even if it's landlocked, you can always take a building off on Richard's Road and put a road in, and it's no longer landlocked. Those things should be required, because it's, open space is required to be deed protected, not deed protected, but permanently protected. The public access can be part of that restriction, but the question is, do you have someone willing to do that? Because I question if, we have concerns about the, the potential for liability when another third party.
Mr. Jenks.
Mr. Chairman, to answer the question of who pays for it, at least in a commercial transaction, that's usually a negotiable item, if you get to that point. But owners resist testing to the greatest end, because once a test is started, if pollution is found, contaminants are found, it has to be reported, and they're under an obligation to report it, and once that happens, there's a whole can of worms opened and problems for the owner, and the deal, of course, falls apart.
So, Mr. Morris, we've spent probably close to forty minutes discussing this, and I'm not sure that there's any further clarification or any movement that we've made or any progress, which is somewhat maddening to me, that we're unable to give any sort of guidance either to this Board, your Board, or to town meeting. So I guess we'll just, that's the end of the discussion item. I'm not sure there's anything more that needs to be said at this point.
Well, Mr. Morris offered to do a little homework, presumably between now and our next meeting, to see whether the possibility this third party pick up is real, you know, and we can at least do that. There seems to be a consensus in the room, just from hearing the different speakers, that if this third-party avenue was viable, most, or if not all of the people who've spoken tonight, would support that.
I would.
Well, my only concern about the third party, the third party is going to get the land in its condition that it is now, and if you're talking about old engines and other automobile parts being dumped there, then more likely than not, there's oil residue in there, and I don't know who's ultimately going to be responsible for that. So I would be reluctant to agree to accept this, given what we know right now. But that's where I come out.
If you were a third party, or the town?
Town.
As the town.
Understood. That's why I say, why don't we, why don't we let the third party thing play out?
The third party would have the same concern. But I think the point is, I agree with Mr. Smino, let's let Mr. Morris work his magic, and, you know, see if he can come up with a viable alternative with the third party. Who knows where those negotiations may lead? You know, we'd be no worse off than we are today, is, you know, if, I mean, I'm hearing some consensus, anyway, and a movement towards consensus, that that's not a bad idea to at least try, and then we'll see what you can do.
I don't disagree with you, Mr. Rooney, but I do feel that we did make some progress here tonight, in that, you know, it's not necessarily what was said, but what wasn't said, you know, so we can move on, and I appreciate it. We'll do the homework, and we'll report back to you and your Board and open space, and see what progress, if any, we make, and then we can make an informed decision as we get further into it.
Okay. Next item, solar bylaw.
They have to adjourn?
No, there's still a discussion with them, right?
Yes, sorry.
Solar bylaw discussion.
So this is a proposed warrant article for a overlay district for as-of-right commercial solar arrays. So 250-kilowatt output ground-mounted arrays, about an acre in size, would be done without the need for special permit by the Planning Board. It would still be subject to the Building Department, normal building permitting process, and a site plan review. And this is part of the Green Communities' efforts, and I suppose, Mr. Purple, you and I would be connecting at some point prior to town meeting, how this would be presented, because currently, my presentation has Green Communities-related slides-
Correct.
-to tie that in. I believe that there's some other articles on the warrant pertaining to Green Communities.
There's one other article, yes, with the Building Stretch Code.
So are these going to be done together, back-to-back, or you and I can just discuss that another time?
We can, we can discuss how that's going to, how that's going to be handled. They are close together. In fact, they are right next to each other, 26 and 27.
Okay. So we'll just work out the details on that.
Thank you. Any questions?
So in order to become a designated Green Community, this bylaw is something we have to pass as a town?
It's one of the requirements, yes. That it's, there's an as-of-right district.
Can you explain for the, I'm sorry?
No, I think I was about to ask the same thing, where the district is going to be.
Yeah, that's question number one.
Yeah. Where is this district going to be?
So there was a slide in my presentation at the public hearing last week. It's a section within the industrial and industrial park districts on the western part of town, very few residential abutters. I'll be happy to send the slide to the, and it's on our website as well.
Thank you.
Have those abutters already been notified of-
Actually, yeah. The town planner sent letters to eligible parcel owners when developing this bylaw to set the area. We got one response, which was to the positive, we got no negative responses, and the area was chosen because I think there's no residential abutters. I'm not 100% sure of that, but few, if any, residential abutters.
Anything further?
It's all located in the industrial zone?
Industrial and industrial park.
So Route 9 West, North and South, or just-
Correct. Within a very concentrated-
Route 9 West.
Well, I believe, I believe, I don't have the slide in my head right now, but I believe Route 9 splits right through the middle of the area. Yep. So Mr. Morris is going to go get the map.
That's all right. South of Route 9? Isn't that privately owned property?
Why don't we just wait for the map?
Okay.
It just isn't the entire industrial and industrial park.
It does not. You might recall, I should note, and I should have said this at the very beginning of this, this article is exactly like last year's warrant article, with the exception of, it's a much smaller area within the industrial and industrial park districts, and it's as-of-right. So all it does is backs out the need for a special permit. It's already allowed with a special permit in the entire industrial and industrial park districts. That's what we passed last year. So this is an overlay on top of that. Thank you.
You had mentioned that this is part of a process where Southborough would become a quote-unquote "Green Community." You're going to have residents thinking, "That's a neat idea." You're going to have residents thinking, "What have you just done? What have you now, you know, what are the requirements now upon me-"
Right.
"-that I didn't know were coming?" Could you explain that?
The benefits, the benefits of being a Green Community is that there's grant money available from the state toward energy-efficient projects. And this is also, I believe, part of the presentation that's on our website, but we do have available those benefits.
Can you explain some of the benefits and also the requirements that come along with that?
I did at the public hearing, I don't have the presentation with me now. If you'd like me to come back and do the presentation prior to town meeting, I'd be happy to do that, but-
I think it'd be important for residents to know, I mean, if we have room for it on a future agenda, Mr. Rooney.
I did do this at the, at the public hearing.
Well, I mean, I don't mean, here, it's on TV, there's some benefit to that, there may be a little bit more coverage for you and your, you know, Board for that particular item. I think it, I think it'd be important, we'll see if we have room on the agenda for it.
Yeah, we had a presentation from the state on the green, the benefits of a Green Community. I don't think we're going to have the opportunity to do it between now and town meeting. I don't think we will be able to fit it on the agenda.
So, but it is on, for the listening public, it is on your website, your, okay?
Yes. And that is the presentation from the state, correct, essentially?
I actually got the slides from Kelly-
Yes.
-Brown with Green Communities, so. But I'm sorry, I can't be more specific, Mr. Kalinda, but it's basically, we submit projects, and many other neighboring towns have done this. You submit the specs of the project to Green Communities, they essentially grant you funds for projects such as making your buses more en- They essentially grant you funds for projects such as making your buses more energy-efficient. So...
But you're not aware of any, there's no material requirements imposed upon the town or the residents that we should, we should know about, that the residents should know about before?
Well, certainly not with this bylaw. I can't speak, maybe Mr. Purple can address the Green, if there's anything...
The, and I would have to, I'm going to be getting something from Mr. Robideau in terms of the differences between the stretch code and the existing building code. However, the, there is a new version of the building code coming out sometime later this year, which continues to narrow that gap between what we have now and what the stretch code is so that the differences at this point are very minimal in terms of the impacts to the builders. And that's my understanding from Mr. Robideau. Back when the Green Community started, the gap was pretty big in order for, you know, it could be several thousand dollars difference in terms of complying with one code versus the stretch code. But now that gap has been narrowed and with the new code coming out later this year, it's going to be virtually closed.
So, Mr. Clinton, I just want to point to the yellow area is the extent of this overlay district. And it is within, as I said, the industrial and industrial park districts in which this is already allowed with special permit. So all we're doing is backing up the need for special permit in that yellow area.
Just confirming I heard correctly, the rated nameplate capacity for the facilities is the same as what's in the bylaw that we passed last year?
Correct.
Thank you. Pine Hill Conservation Restriction.
There are, there are two or three parcels associated with the developments over at, off of Pine Hill. Again, this subdivision goes back several years. There's a parcel that is right on Pine Hill Road, used to be called the sledding field. It's an open field that also contains the detention basin, but it's, looks a little bit like a meadow. And then there's at least one other, and I think it's divided into two pieces, of a wooded area of open space off of, I think it's Nichols. So again, those, those pieces of open space, as far as we can tell to this date, have been very well taken care of. The, at the time of the approval, the developer formed a preservation trust and named trustees to oversee and take care of that property. There was a need for a, at the time that we did this, conservation restrictions were not as common to the Southborough Planning Board and our open space process as they are now. So as the years have gone by, it was, I guess, agreed to or discussed that a conserva, a formal conservation restriction be placed on those parcels. And so the town council and the trustees council worked out a conservation restriction. We had a public hearing, planning board held a public hearing. Was it a public hearing or a meeting? On the conservation restriction? We recently discussed it at one of our meetings. And there was a question about one word within that conservation restriction that I discussed briefly with town council this afternoon, but we still don't have, the trustees were given that as a homework assignment to explain why this one word was in there. It was questioned by the Open Space Commission. So we don't have that answer back yet, as far as I know. And so, once that gets resolved, that conservation restriction is ready to go and ready to be voted on. On Friday, last Friday, I received information that the trustees of that open space were transferred to a different people. And I was contacted by one of those new trustees who indicated or respect, requested that the article be pulled and that they would work on their own conservation restriction. Because it was so recent, I asked for, you know, some information by email or a letter to explain to the planning board, to town council, and I guess to the public, why we're changing that course, that direction. And I did receive, the planning department did receive an email today, which I got later, late this afternoon, and haven't really had time to go over it. So again, going back to the discussion I had with town council this afternoon, I'm going to share that with him either tonight or at his earliest convenience. And then we'll share that information or be advised as to which way to go and, I guess, take appropriate action. But it's kind of a, a new piece of information that we just got.
So you'll make a decision before town meeting whether or not that article is going to go forward or not?
Yes, and I, if that's, if we can leave it as that for tonight...
Yes.
Because of the recent email and the person that sent me the email has a very strong reputation of doing things right and properly explaining what's happened and what's contemplated, you know, what the finished product will be. And so I have confidence that we'll be able to do this in the best interest of the trustees of that open space and also in the best interest of the town.
Thank you. The last item is discussion relative to amending Chapter 174, Article III, use variances.
I don't think that was on our agenda tonight.
Yeah, okay, it was on our agenda. Is there, is there any update or?
That's what he said. No, that wouldn't be it.
Want to table that?
Do you have any more words that you could attach to that? Maybe help us?
I can tell you what the article says. Well, I'm not going to read the whole thing. You're aware about the, I assume you're aware of the article?
Relative to use variances, I don't...
It's adding the multifamily housing for the elderly to residents?
The nonprofit.
Yeah, yes.
Those are the magic words, the nonprofit.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
That was not on my agenda.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mrs. Bartolini?
Have not been told I was going to be doing this. The article for the over-55 housing, as currently written within our zoning bylaw, has a provision, hasn't actually been followed, but has a provision that the owner of the over-55 project, the developer, has to be either a charity or a public entity, nonprofit or a public entity. In a case that is going through the courts now, this has been challenged and although the total appeal has not been completed, a court dicta has been issued that the provision of ownership is outside the legal jurisdiction of zoning. Zoning only pertains to how, what kind of development can occur and how that development can be shaped, height setbacks, things of that nature. You cannot say what entity can actually own or develop the site. So the intent of that by, the article that we're putting forth is to remedy the deficiency in the current bylaw.
Understood. Thank you for that explanation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any questions relative to that explanation? Ms. Gillespie?
Hi, Freddie Gillespie, Seventy-Eight Southville Road, speaking as a resident. My concern about this is, my understanding is, well, there's still a court appeal on this and by putting this forth, it would be, you have residents in the town who are appealing a decision. And when that decision is finalized, you'll know where the courts really stand. Putting this forth now is acting as judge and jury because if they win that case, you've actually taken the win away from them because you've changed the bylaw of what they're appealing. So the question is, what's the big rush now? It's been out there for a long time. We know in the past there have been other bylaws where there were issues and there was no rush to go fix it. Citizens petitions had to be undertaken. So, you know, what's the big rush right now when it's still in court? You know, the appeal, let the judge find out. And then if the judge agrees that you can't have the ownership, change the bylaw. But in the meantime, why would you take that right away from your citizens? It'd be like changing any other bylaw someone's appealing.
Yeah, it's my understanding that the issue relative to the ownership is pretty much a given in terms of the appeal. There's not going to be much of an issue in terms of it coming back and the appeals court saying, "No, they can do this." It's pretty well-known in the industry and having read the decision. So I think it's a proactive effort on behalf of the planning board to get our bylaw in accordance with the law as expressed in the lower court and certainly will be appealed as well.
I think that's a very good summary. The primary issue on appeal, first of all, the ZBIA was upheld in that decision by the land court. The primary issue on appeal is actually a threshold issue of standing or grieve party status, which was most of what the decision of land court was based upon. But at the same time, the land court judge was concerned with the certain language that was being focused on relative to the over-55 projects and asked us all, all councils, to address the ability to regulate ownership versus use in zoning. And all councils did. And basically, he gave, as one of the planning board members indicated, Mr. Bartolini, a dicta decision that he concluded that that offensive phrase could not be utilized in local zoning. But it was also noted that it has not been utilized, that every decision was based on something else. But once council sees that in a decision of the land court or any court, then it would be my responsibility to at least identify that as an issue to my clients and have them cure that. So I think that regardless of what happens on appeal, that still is violative information in the bylaw.
Well, Mr. Morris, thank you very much for your board convening and going through these articles. It was certainly helpful. I don't think that we're going to have the time to meet again between now and town meeting to the extent you have any additional revisions or amendments or what have you. So unless you have anything else to say, I thank you again for spending so much time with us.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you very much. And planning board would like to welcome back Mr. Semino and good health.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, discussion of Public Works Planning Board goals.
Don't they have to adjourn in public? Last time they left the room and did that, they nailed that.
Good evening.
Oh, sorry. The planning board is still in session and we're going to move our meeting down to the planner's office.
So let me see if I can briefly frame this issue. A discussion was held earlier in the year with regards to town boards and committees and the underutilization of various committees and boards. As a result of those discussions, one of the boards that was identified for discussion was the Public Works Planning Board. Mrs. Faniff and I met with Ms. Asselbankian and Mr. Bazakis, I'd say about two to three weeks ago, where we went over the issues and we talked about the best way to move forward. And with that, I would turn it over to Mrs. Faniff to further educate the board. I just wanted this board to know where we've been at this point.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rooney. I met with Mr. Rooney and Desiree and Bobby Bazakis and discussed how we're going to move forward as far as the Public Works Planning Committee Board being an advisory board to the Board of Selectmen. We haven't had a policy in place, not that we need a policy, we need to give direction. And since that meeting, I also had a discussion with the DPW Superintendent, Karen Galligan and Mark Purple as far as having Karen and the Public Works Planning Committee sit down and hammer out what they think their individual roles may be before we start any kind of a conflict or have a full discussion here. I think the discussion needs to take place at the DPW, with the DPW Superintendent first and put something on paper that parties agree to in theory or maybe add to with the blessing of this board. But they're an advisory board to the Board of Selectmen and we're not using them. There are five citizens that are very involved, appointed by the moderator, the planning board in this board. It's one of the largest boards, departments that we have in town as far as monetary sums contributed to one department to function, whether it be the water reserves or the general fund that we vote on at town meeting. So I think it's an asset, but we need to have direction. And I think for that direction to happen, there has to be a sit-down discussion with the superintendent and the Public Works Planning Board. So I'm volunteering to work on it and get back here ASAP. And if another member of this board would like to take a role in this, I'd be more than happy if this board chooses to allow me to do it. I would suggest Mr. Shea, if he'd like to step up, since he is on the Main Street Working Group. He's familiar with the workings of the department and the personnel. It might be helpful so we don't have to rehash a lot of outstanding issues if there are any. It's a suggestion. I think we need to move forward in a positive way and utilize this Public Works Committee.
Mr. Shea?
I would be, if this board is so inclined to have me do that, I would be open to that suggestion. I think I was one of the ones that identified this board when we discussed our goals several months ago as well, so certainly willing to step up and help out.
Any other discussion at this point? Ms. Asselbankian, sorry.
Thank you very much. Just to reiterate the comments that Mrs. Faniff made, our board unanimously voted at our last meeting to address your goals. And as we advise the selectmen in matters of the DPW, we think it's very prudent to help you fulfill your goal. So if part of your goals is to identify boards or committees and their roles and responsibilities that take place in this town to better do your work, then it only serves us to help you in that process. So I'd be, I think it's unanimous that we would be very willing to work with a liaison of your choosing in getting something a little bit more concrete than the very vague statute that was put in place in 1991. So we look forward to working with the selectmen. We always work with Ms. Galligan. We do meet more regularly than we have in the past and Ms. Galligan's always at our meetings. So we look forward to getting a more concrete calendar of events, if you will, for our work moving forward.
Thank you. Anything further?
Have you posted your next meeting?
We haven't posted our next meeting. We tentatively, as a board, had picked March 7th. So that's kind of where we're at. There may be an issue with Ms. Galligan meeting that night, so we'll have to readdress that. But I wanted to move as quickly as possible and try not to get in, get lost in town meeting. So the goal was to try to meet very rapidly within the next two weeks, to try to get something on the books in a conversation moving forward quickly. Because, I mean, after all, your year for your yearly goals, I would imagine, would be up fairly shortly as well.
I would encourage a meeting sooner than later. This board has a lot of work before it and I realize Karen does also, but a meeting soon.
Anything further? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to flip around the agenda just... I'm going to flip around the agenda just a little bit.
Mr. Rooney, can I?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were done.
Should we formalize our liaison?
Who's the liaison? Who should I be contacting relative to making meeting times?
Either Mrs. Faniff or Mr. Shea.
Mr. Shea.
Okay. Wonderful.
He has a computer.
I will be in touch with you, Mr. Shea. Thank you very much.
I am going to go to the discussion of the town meeting warrant articles only because we have some people here that want to talk about that and the review of the budget may take a little bit longer. Before we get there, I can tell this board that the review and approval of policies are not going to go forward this evening. There's still some work in progress with regards to having these policies reviewed by other entities such that it's not, they are not ready for us to discuss them this evening or vote on them. So those will come off the agenda. I don't know if there's any public comment beyond what we're going to talk about, the town meeting warrant articles. So really, what we're left to do is discussion of town meeting warrant articles, presentation of fiscal year '17 budget, town administrative report. I don't know if there's anything beyond the town presentation of the budget and then the one consent agenda item. What I would also like to do while we are all here, I have been spending some time at the senior center, working with Pam LaFrancois, Peg Leonard, and Bill Harrington. And one of the things that I know that this board is always interested in doing is increasing participation in our decision-making process. And I have suggested to them, and they have agreed, that on a regular basis, one, two, or all the selectmen go down to the senior center and meet with groups of people and just talk about their positions on various town issues because you'd be amazed at how many different perspectives they bring to the discussion. They're not all in tune or they're not all on the computer, so we don't normally get emails from them. So, and they don't come to our meetings. So since they are not coming to us, I think we should go to them and have these regular meetings. Now, the senior center calendar has already come out for April and May. And the next calendar comes out at the end of May. And there'll be a more formal announcement from the senior center about these meetings. But in the meantime, and specifically in preparation for town meeting, I thought, and the people that I talked with there agreed, not just the three that I mentioned, but numerous seniors that are at the center, that they'd like to get these discussions going immediately. So this Friday, every Friday, they have something called the dull men's club. And they also, with regards to the ladies, it's the interesting ladies' club that meet on Friday mornings, starting at nine. And there's generally quite a robust turnout. So I scheduled the first meeting for this Friday. I scheduled my, I moved things around my schedule such that I can attend. So to the extent that anyone else is available and would like to attend, they were very specific in discussing these meetings in terms of if these meetings are going to have any import or any validity to them, they want to make sure that I bring to the senior center people who may have different political thoughts or opinions than mine. In other words, they just don't want to have people there saying the same thing over and over. They just want to have a real good back-and-forth discussion. So to the extent anyone is available this Friday, that would be great. This is also a staff appreciation day at the senior center on this Friday, I believe, begins at 11:30, 11:45. So it would fit very well together. And then, we said, "Listen, we'll see how it goes." But they're expecting some pretty significant turnout once the, it gets formalized on the calendar that's sent out. But they're also, they said to come, be, to come prepared to discuss issues with them. So I do think it's a great opportunity for us to go there and I would urge whoever is present to meet me there Friday at nine. That said, we're going to talk about town meeting warrant articles. Mr. Purple.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item was put on the agenda at your direction, kind of as an omnibus discussion of the warrant. There was a copy of the warrant in its current format that was included in the packet. It now has 35 articles attached to it. I've been working with town council to finalize the language on some of these and will continue to do so over the next couple of weeks. The intention is for the board to sign the final warrant on March 15th at your next meeting. This evening, there are a couple of issues that I think the board is looking to discuss. There have been three petition articles that have been received in our office today. The signatures have been certified by the town clerk, submitted by Marty Houlihan. And I believe Kevin Houlihan is here to speak to those this evening. Also, there is a discussion, I believe, that the board needs to have concerning 84 Main Street and the preservation restriction that is being worked on by a number of groups to try to bring this to town meeting and the question of whether or not we're going to be able to get that done in time for town meeting and if so, either with the 84 Main Street or with the articles that are being presented by Mr. Houlihan this evening, whether it's the intention of the board to reopen the warrant to include these articles. As you recall, the board closed the warrant in January. You don't have any obligation to reopen it. However, you do have the ability to reopen it if it is the board's wishes. So those are the items that are on the table. I'm not sure in what order the board would like to take those up.
Yeah, why don't we start with the citizens' petition? And as I told Mr. Houlihan at the hearing on the medical marijuana dispensary, that I would be, I would be in favor, I don't know how the rest of my board would vote, but I would be in favor of reopening the warrant. And I am generally in favor of reopening the warrant when there's a citizens' petition to get before town meeting. I just don't have a problem with doing that. The one thing, and I've gone back and forth, Mr. Houlihan, with your wife, is that the way that I read these petitioned articles, they are looking for a zoning bylaw change. And that's fine, we'll still open the warrant, but in order to get these petitioned articles to town meeting floor, you need, or the petitioner needs, to make sure you go through the proper channels with the planning board, who needs to advertise and publish notices whenever there's a zoning bylaw proposed change at town meeting. And there are certain strict time guidelines under which that needs to be done even before you, or in order to get it to town meeting. So if this board votes in favor of opening up the warrant and putting this on, it doesn't mean you're going to have a discussion at town meeting. You still need to do your prerequisite steps in front of the planning board in order to get it there. That was the first thing that I told your wife. The second thing is, as I read these articles, and I think as we understand, and you, I'd like you to correct me if I'm wrong, is that these, these are proposed zoning bylaw changes which would be, if enacted, prospective in nature. In other words, they would not impact the applicant or the application of the entity, the business entity that was here before. In other words, you're looking to change the bylaw, which would apply moving forward as opposed to, apply retroactively. Is that correct? Come on up here.
Kevin Houlihan, 26 Clifford Road. Actually, no, the, to answer your question, it would be to go retroactive.
Yeah, well, I think you were going to have a problem with that, but again, I'm not going to opine on that because that is not, that is not my wheelhouse in terms of retroactivity of a zoning bylaw. But as I, as I understand the law, and we have counsel here, assuming you get all this information in its proper form and you get it before town meeting and then it gets reviewed by the Attorney General and then it gets enacted as the bylaw of this town, I don't know how it would have retroactive application to the applicant that was previously before here. But that's neither here nor there, no reason to discuss that. I just think that, just make sure you are under the understanding, or at least you want to clarify that, because if it is your objective or thought process that these new changes to the bylaw would impact the application that came before us the other night, I think you are mistaken. But again, that's my opinion, it may be different than your opinion.
Well, let me ask you a question then. Their application was just for you guys to comment on approval or non-opposition. They haven't yet filed with the special permitting process to get it approved with them.
I believe they have.
They have.
And has that been approved?
I don't know the date that they have filed for. I know they have filed and I know that there is a hearing date. I want to say, I don't want to guess. It's sometime in March, so it's sometime before town meeting.
Near the end of March. I believe the hearing process starts. Now, when we left the meeting last time, there was a lot of conversation from Mr. Semino, welcome back, around finding a different location. I'd love to know what kind of conversations were had because we did seem, at least from my perspective, to rush to judgment on that particular night, to let them go through with a lot of open questions from a lot of residents that are a little bit up in arms. So this is, you know, one of our attempts to kind of get in the way of some of those things. Also to rewrite our bylaws to kind of fit with some gaps that we have in our bylaws around medical marijuana. And there are gaps based on our attorney's views. So if you could answer the first question around what has been done since we, since you guys last met around finding a different location, because I'm kind of surprised to hear that now they're already going to the zoning board for probably the place right on Route 9 near the Volvo dealership.
I can tell you that I have not had any discussions with anyone relative to alternative sites. Mrs. Semino can update you on his discussions.
So I would preface this by saying that I'm not surprised that they pushed forward on their application at the current location, simply because it's the extremely prudent, business-oriented thing to do is to preserve their rights that they have currently, regardless of whether they would eventually decamp for another spot. I don't have all of the details, I do, but not with me tonight, and I'm happy to pass those on to you, Mr. Houlihan. The proponent of the project has been in communication, actually in quite a bit of detail with me, with regard to alternative sites on Route 9, that they have investigated both before and since we were all here for the hearing that evening. There are quite a few sites that are, so far, none has been completely suitable. That is to say, you actually have quite a few owners out there who are willing and asking these people to come and look at my property. Hey, why don't you come, you know, I've got space for you, I've got land for you to build something, et cetera. In many cases, these are outside of the currently approved zone or have other deficiencies that don't allow sort of a, just a clean switch from where they are now to these new places. But I can assure you, and as I say, don't take my word for it, I'll give you the details, but I can assure you that they have, to this point, kept their pledge to dig into alternative sites.
Okay. I think with what you'll see in the articles that we're bringing forward, that it doesn't prevent them from looking at other sites. It also, there is some forward-looking stuff around recreational use, which scares the living daylights out of me. So that one is forward-looking. I think the only one that's a little bit retroactive is we're back to the thousand square feet from a school and the fact that we had nothing around a budding a resident, a residence. So it would be interesting to see if there are other locations. I bet that they would not fail based on those two criteria, on the thousand, the thousand feet and the hundred from a residential.
Yeah, I don't want to get into the discussion about the merits of your article or the various locations that the applicant may be looking at. I want to try to focus on the petitioned articles, opening the warrant and moving forward with that process, just so you know. So with that said, in order to open the warrant or reopen the warrant, it requires a vote of this board to do so.
Is the opening of the warrant limited to this one item?
No. What I would recommend is that...
Well, these, these... These three?
No.
What I would recommend is that we, to the extent there's a vote in favor of opening it, we open it. Then we continue our discussion with town warrant articles and then we determine if there is a need to add any more. And then before we conclude our meeting this evening, we close it. So I would not want to open it and close it and then have to open it and close it again this evening.
Okay. I would say that the content, maybe not ultimately dispositive, but the content of these, Mr. Rooney, is relevant in the sense that, for example, likelihood of success both at town meeting and passing muster with the Attorney General. What I see here is sort of a reversion back to what did not pass in, at special in October of '14, including a restriction of distance from residences. Residences were specifically discussed at the special and town meeting, you know, did not, purposely did not want to reference residential parcels with regard to the bylaw that was eventually approved. They may change their mind this time around. So I'm not inclined to oppose this solely on that basis, but I do make note that I'm concerned about the likelihood of success.
So just a note on that, I'm quite confident you're going to have a much different group of citizens joining for this particular issue so, than may have been, and also if I remember correctly, that was, I don't think it was a wide margin of victory.
It was two-thirds. So it was pretty significant.
Well, you add in all of the folks who may not have been there and, you know, I think you're going to have, the likelihood is a much different result.
Listen, whether or not it's going to pass or not, again, that's, I don't want to talk about that this evening. I just want to talk about getting this article on the warrant and then we can have the discussion. I mean, I, the fact is...
I'll make a motion to open, to reopen the town meeting warrant.
Just a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So you're in for the time, you're in, but you're not...
Not done.
Not done.
Can I follow up with you or someone else on the board to maybe walk me through that process with the planning? Or is that you, Mr. Purple?
That'd be fine.
That's fine.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Purple, these will be included in the warrant before it goes to the printer and they're going to have to do their due diligence with the planning board before it has a discussion at town meeting. With regards to other discussion of town articles, does anyone have any questions based upon the draft that's in the packet? I don't know.
Monetary articles or articles?
I'm sorry, Mrs. Faniff?
Monetary articles or just general?
Yeah, we're going to talk about the budget separately.
Okay.
That's why, again, I didn't want to close the warrant until after we had the budget discussion as well. So one thing that's missing in here, Mr. Semino, is some articles relative to 84 Main Street. So to the extent that the articles are going to be proposed by the Community Preservation Committee, I do think we need to keep the article or the warrant open for discussion of that, putting it in there.
I thought...
And then perhaps a second one relative to funding.
I thought we had a placeholder for that. Do we not, Mark?
We do not.
Okay. Yes, I agree.
So what we're going to need is some wording. Mr. Cipriano.
Relative to 84 Main, internally, we've created an omnibus article, which is basically the article to see if the town meeting is willing to authorize the acceptance of a preservation restriction. But because... of a, of a preservation restriction, but because of the funding source being CPC under Chapter forty-four B, that will require a separate article, and the key to this, and I've spoken with the treasurer-collector, and briefly with the, the chairman of the, the CPC committee, the source of funding. I've heard coming from general reserves, historic reserves, and I've heard bonding. So that has to be ultimately decided. The, the preservation restriction article is going to require a two-thirds vote, because it's an acquisition of an interest in real estate, and routinely, a CPC appropriation is majority unless there is borrowing, and if there is borrowing, then that's also going to become two-thirds.
And we are not going to know the borrowing amount or the amount that CPC is recommending until two things happen, I believe. One is the town is in receipt of the appraisal for the preservation restriction, and two, there's a vote by the CPC as to what they would support at town meeting relative to funding.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
And those all have to be done prior to March twenty-first, when the warrant goes to print, correct?
Yes.
All right, so we have three weeks, including weekends.
We're aware.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, we really have less time than that if you expect a discussion to take place, and we have copies of what we're potentially going to be asked to support.
You're absolutely correct, and the, and the Community Preservation Committee also had a concern about how much time they would have to evaluate the actual substance of the appraisal, as opposed to a number. The number should be coming in, I believe, on March fourteenth.
That would be a verbal number?
That's a verbal number, but the, but again, the committee rightfully, and you rightfully so, you want to see the detail of that, so you can explain it to the town meeting.
So, Mr. Purple, do we need to do anything further that, other than have the vote to open the warrant, which we did, insert these citizen petitions, which we did, and insert two additional articles, the content of which, or the drafting of which, will be forwarded to you shortly thereafter? Is there anything else we need to do?
No, if the board is, if the board is satisfied with everything else that's in there, then I, then, then all you would do then would be to close the warrant again.
And that's just with respect to making sure that the warrant is inclusive of all that needs to be discussed, or is it the intent now to go through and formulate opinions and recommendations on each of the articles?
Well, the board will need to, at some point, take positions on the articles, or if the board declines to take a position, it could be at town meeting, which in some of the planning board articles that were discussed this evening, the board may not have enough information to take position as to whether or not planning will even go forward with some of those, so at-town meeting would be an appropriate response, but I believe that's the intention for next meeting, is to begin to take positions on those articles.
And removing an article, so it doesn't go to print next meeting as well, or would you like to know that now?
Now would be great.
I think the noise bylaw hasn't been vetted enough. It's, to me, it's rather complicated. I think we had a good stab at it, but it hasn't been a lot, I don't think there's a lot of public debate on it, and there's sections in it that require the Board of Selectmen to set up parameters of use and times, and we don't have that yet, so I'd like to have it withdrawn until maybe a future town meeting.
Any objection to withdrawing that article?
We do have our police chief here, if, if he would be of value.
Who's the sponsor? Board of Selectmen?
Yeah.
Chief, do you have any...
Sorry, it's having a conversation.
No, no problem. So there was a question that came up on the noise bylaws, to whether or not we should remove it from the warrant, whether or not there's been enough discussion on it. I didn't know if you had a position on that particular warrant.
We've done the research, I think it's ready to go forward. I was kind of surprised in coming here that there's absolutely nothing on the books.
Give me a microphone.
I think me and Mark have vetted it, we've done our research, I think it's ready to go forward. I was kind of surprised in coming here that there's absolutely nothing on the books. It's certainly not a, a problem that we see every day, but it does come up, especially in warmer months between neighbors, and I think that we got enough samples, and we've tweaked it enough, where it's ready to go forward. I'm comfortable with it.
Chief, is it consistent with other bylaws in surrounding towns you may have seen?
Yeah, I think we targeted Marlborough's language and Ashland's language, and kind of took the best out of both of them to, to come to what we have, to, to suit our needs.
Has there been public discussion that you're aware of on the proposed bylaw?
Not that I'm aware of.
If you're, in fairness to the chief, I actually had discussions with the chief and Mr. Purple about situations that we've had in town, and this draft, I saw it for the first time, as far as the total draft of the content of that bylaw, a week ago. And it's, it's far more extensive than I thought it would be, and I'm concerned about the management of it. I know it says the Police Department, but then also the Board of Health, and I don't know how we, we're going to manage this bylaw ourselves financially.
It's not a problem that comes up often, I think it's just the groundwork is laid for extreme circumstances. Everything we try to mediate, you know, as much as we can.
And you've done a good job at it.
Is it more of an enforcement mechanism than a, than a management mechanism?
It's something that's on the books when, when push comes to shove.
Is it going to require you, your department, or any of the departments, to do something extra that you're not otherwise normally doing now? Does it, does it provide you some additional tools or resources that you need?
I think that's exactly what it is. It provides us with a tool.
All right, so are you happy with it going forward right now?
I am right now, yes.
A follow-up question. Does this require a hearing?
It's, it's, well, to the extent of a statutory public hearing, that's required for zoning articles. Whether you wish to conduct, there's no statutory requirement for general bylaw articles, but for informational purposes, if you wish to, I mean, this is a comprehensive bylaw to be considered, so you may decide that you want to have some form of a informational meeting, or whatever you wish to call it, including a public hearing, but it's not required by state statute.
Two-thirds a vote, or simple majority?
No, bylaw, general bylaw is a simple majority.
So I'll just say that I asked a question I did earlier, whether it was the intent to get into a, you know, substantive discussion on each article, or just making sure that the warrant was complete, because I had a number of questions on this as well. I don't know that I'm ready to, to vote to completely pull it tonight, but I think, you know, when we do have this brought up at our meeting, I think it's, you know, there's a number of things that I would like to ask, to dig it deep, to go further into this. Again, I understand the concept and the reason for it, and I'm supportive of that, but I just want to make sure that there aren't other ancillary things that come up that would, you know, cause hardships for, for citizens that could get caught in this, in the language, the technical language of the bylaw as well, so.
Mr. Stivers.
Sam Stivers, Seven Presidential Drive, a member of the Advisory Committee, but speaking as a private citizen. I agree with Ms. Faniff, I think this is not ready for primetime yet. I'm as much in favor of peace and quiet as the next person, but I think there's some real restrictive language in here that, as people understand, for example, that if I'm playing my radio outside and you can hear it twenty-five feet away, it just says audible twenty-five feet away, I'm in violation of this bylaw. And there is also considerable language in here that talks about subjective issues relative to enforcement. If it, it disturbs the personal enjoyment of, of someone, I think there's some real challenges in terms of determining precisely when the bylaw has been violated. So I think it makes sense to have this kind of structure in place, but I would argue that it's a good first step, is to put something in place that has much higher levels of, of enforcement, if you will, or tolerance, and then work on getting the levels adjusted to the right level, as opposed to something that I view as pretty draconian here, and if people realize some of the restrictions in here, I think it's not likely to get a lot of support at town meeting, so I would urge you to pull it. Thank you.
Well, if the article is sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, someone's going to speak in, in support of this at, at town meeting, and go through these, these questions about restrictions, and address the concern that Mr. Stivers has, as well as other people may have. These are concerns that could be addressed at a meeting whereby this is vetted, rather than on town meeting floor, which I can conceive that this article could possibly take hour, and then we're going to go back to the drawing board, as we've done on numerous occasions. So I think Mrs. Faniff makes a good suggestion that it's not ready. We don't have to pull it this evening, we can wait to see whether or not something can be done. I, I don't think we have the time, Mr. Purple, between now and town meeting, to have a full public hearing on this. We have one more meeting, March fifteenth, and that meeting is pretty full already, in terms of what needs to take place on that day. So I don't think it's realistic to think we're going to have a hearing on this bylaw outside of town meeting, prior to town meeting. That said, Mrs. Faniff, perhaps we can wait to pull it, if it's going to be pulled, or to the extent that people want to forge ahead, I think we do so at our peril, if the, these discussions happen on town meeting floor, as opposed to beforehand.
Who's going to present it?
I, I don't, that's...
I promoted it, but now, now that I've read it, I am not going to present it.
Right. So just question, follow-up question for the chief. So if there hasn't been any public discussion yet, and this, this particular bylaw hasn't been in place in South Borough before, we've done, you know, without it for quite some time, any real harm in, in pulling it, and having additional discussion to get it right, and maybe having it ready for next town meeting?
Yeah, absolutely not. It's the democratic process, so let it play out. We've, like you said, we've been without it for a long time, so we can, we can go a little further.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend that we take it back and we work on it, and get it down to something that is perhaps more streamlined.
I, I actually don't have an opinion one way or the other tonight about the substance, whether we need to work on it or not, massage it from its current form or not, but I do have a concern about going to town meeting on a, on a warrant article for which there has not been a public hearing of any type, so I would support...
Which is not required.
Not required.
But it sounds like a good idea.
But it, yeah, it's, it's, it's a self-imposed sort of standard, so I would support Mrs. Faniff's suggestion to pull it.
Same.
Well, then, perhaps a motion.
I'll make a motion that the noise bylaw, it's not a bylaw, it is a bylaw, be removed from the warrant, draft warrant.
Which is presently draft article number eighteen.
Correct.
Just a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So that comes out of the warrant?
I'll, I'll vote to keep it on.
Okay.
In opposition on that.
Four to one, that comes off. Any other article discussions that we need to have, Mr. Purple, before we move on to the budget? Mrs. Asselbankian?
Desiree Asselbankian, one thirty-seven Woodland Road. I actually have a general question relative to the agenda and how it was posted. You did post tonight that you'd be having discussion of town meeting warrant articles, which I think that you adequately did. I, however, have a question about the opening of your, of the warrant. Where the warrant had already been closed, I believe over a month ago, was there sufficient notice given to residents based on the posting of this notification, that the warrant would in fact be open again? The reason why I ask that is, as you stated, Mr. Rooney, last meeting, you were, you had a reasonable, reasonable knowledge that the, the warrant possibly would be reopened relative to Mr. Houlihan's petitions, and you've had talk with them in the past two weeks. I'm just, I'm just questioning the validity of the posting, that the public had noticed that the warrant was going to reopen tonight, because, as you know, other people may have had warrant articles that they would have submitted had they had the actual notification that the warrant would be reopened.
Excellent point. Two, two, two points that I would make in response to that. I, I believe I stated at the last meeting that it would be our intention to reopen the warrant on February twenty-ninth, if and only if, though, we were presented with a, a petition to reopen the warrant. At the time that this went out, we had not received a petition to reopen the warrant, so there, there was not a certainty that we were going to reopen the warrant. I wasn't just going to reopen it generally, without anything presented to us. So the discussion, or the item is described as discussion of town meeting warrant articles. It, it does not specifically say the reopening of the warrant, because there was a possibility that I was not going to move to reopen the warrant if we didn't have anything in front of us. But I did, I believe, both at the medical marijuana hearing, as well as our last meeting, I indicated multiple times that if there was a petition presented to us, I specifically said, I would like that petition on our February twenty-ninth meeting, at which time we would move to reopen.
Yes, and that's why I questioned the, why, why the notification hadn't been met.
Because I didn't know if we were going to get it.
And you're, you indicated that you only received that today?
We received the petition certified from the clerk about two hours ago.
Okay, although you've had two weeks that you have been in talks of...
Been in talks with them and asking them that, and I also told them that, listen, I'm not going to reopen the warrant until I get your petition to do so.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Mr. Purple, did you want to say?
Yeah, no, I was just going to say, the petition article came in late this morning, and so it was given to the town clerk's office, I think, sometime around noon time, a little bit afternoon time, and then he certified it and provided it to us just before the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Presentation of fiscal year seventeen budget.
Can we take a short recess while we set up the...
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. 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 Discussion of fiscal year seventeen budget. Mr. Ballantyne, welcome. Thank you for coming.
Good evening. This is a continuing discussion regarding the FY seventeen budget. We have been before, before the board before presenting some, I guess, work in progress budget material. Tonight, you'll see what the town administrator and myself have fairly finished up with, with the budget. There'll be a few items that could change between now and when the warrant goes to print, actually theoretically even after that, but we don't anticipate those changes will be very material or there'll be many of them, but without further ado, we can get right into this and see what you think. So we'd like to congratulate and, well, really more acknowledge and thank the department heads and the committees and staff. They were great to work with this year. Very good rapport. Everyone came in and did what they had to do and were very, you know, very willing to work with us, so we appreciate it. Thank you, everyone. It's not a fun process, which is why we sometimes put up the fun pictures. So the recommended seventeen budget results, the total operational budget is one million six hundred eight thousand, or about three and a half percent over the sixteen approved budget. In the education sector, Algonquin and the K to eight is a two point zero eight percent increase, which is one of the lower increases we've seen in a number of years, so that's a great thing. Assabit had an increase of fifty-nine percent or so. The total education sector was two and a half percent. The fifty-eight point nine percent seems astounding, but they have a capital, as you know, they did a great renovation over there, and they have a capital schedule that they're paying down, and this is the first year it really kicked in. Add to that that we had a handful of new students take advantage of that at the grade school, and our assessment also went up, so we kind of got a double whammy with them this year. In the non-educational department sectors, the increase was four, a little over four percent. These kind of departments include your departments that you're familiar with, police, fire, the town hall departments, council and aging, DPW, all those type of departments. In the benefit debt and liability accounts, the increase was about two point four eight percent. This includes the post-employment benefits, which I think you're familiar with. We are now annually funding that, so another two hundred fifty thousand is in this budget for the second year. And the increase in that budget is five point eight percent. That's the benefits budget, by the way, by itself. The recommended budget results, number two, the average tax increase would be about two point six five percent. As you know, last year, we ended up right around, right under one, two percent. The average would be about two hundred and forty dollars to the average household. Again, that's subject to the tax rate setting process in the fall. Typically, and I can't guarantee it, but typically, we usually have a beneficial change to that tax rate, so our hope would be it would even be lower than the two point six five percent. Staffing and the changes in staffing, the regional schools is adding four point three FTEs with full-time equivalent positions. And excluding the regional schools, the number is an increase of three point one zero for full-time equivalent positions. The school positions are spread over several positions they have over there. They're not hiring like a new teacher or anything. It's all more, they do part-time and third-time people. It's real kind of strange the way they do some of their positions. So the budget changes from last year, or I should say this year to next year, where it's projected to be. As you can see, the revenues are about a million two we've gained. That's new tax levy and local receipts, our local revenue. Our free cash, as you know, again, went down, so that's actually counting against us as minus four hundred thousand. And the water funding is in there also for revenue. Expenses, total charges, around one point three six four, so it's slightly higher, which is why our levy capacity is going from two point four eight two to two point three four zero. So it drops a little bit because we're using some of that. And the reason for that is, well, there's a couple of reasons, but the town budget, obviously, six hundred thousand, the benefit budget, three hundred sixty thousand, and the other pieces, that was interesting, the other pieces being the education budget, six hundred and seventy thousand, and that all totals the one point three.
Question, with regards to the expenses, if all things were equal to fiscal year seventeen, sixteen budget, and the warrant articles were the same as they were last year, the expenses would be one point five, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct. Here's just a pie chart we put up every year for our revenue sources. We just divvied up a little more this year, the actual levy into the commercial industrial portion of property versus the real estate tax. So as you can see, between the two, it's a little over seventy percent that is derived from the tax levy. Then we have all these other little things, you know, we have some water funding, debt exclusion funding, free cash, school building fund, and the other things, but it primarily gives you the sense of how much of our sources is from residential taxes, which is quite a bit. Now, the breakdown of the funding on the other side of things, as you can see, fifty-four point four eight is education, while five point six three percent is government and thirteen percent is employee benefits. Then you have your public safety, DPW, the larger departments, which comprise, you know, about seven or eight percent, so.
And that employee benefits, both school and town?
That was actually what I was just going to say, yes. The employee benefits does hold the school portion of that, so many towns think, oh, schools are about seventy percent. So when you're portion all that in with the debt also, because the school debt is also in the school, is also in that general debt green area, it is probably about seventy percent.
Okay.
Departmental budgets, this is getting a little more down to the detail, these are just the highlighted departments that have had something change or we thought should be of note. MIS, I think we've talked about it before with the board, however, where the town is looking to hire a full-time IT person next year, so that is in the budget. It's a transitional type of organizational structure where the first year, possibly the first year or two, we'll have NENZAR contracted service helping us out to have a smooth transition for that process, and we hope that that person can, you know, create a master plan or do some things that are a little more visionary than the towns had for their information technology in the past. I think that has pretty broad support. The police department has new one officer on its budget. This will help maintain the two offices on the third shift. It'll give them a little more question. He made a compelling argument, and I think he made an argument to look at this again next year and see if there's actually additional manpower that he might need, albeit a second or a third officer somewhere down the line, but we've agreed that we'll evaluate that at the end of the next fiscal year and see where that goes. DPW, the biggest thing, I would assume would probably be the transfer station stickers as they are shifting from that locale down to the town clerk's office. I think you've been briefed on that, that move earlier in the year, so that's a substantial organizational change for them. So hopefully, that'll be a little bit more convenient to the public and we can have a good system going on there. The town engineer unfortunately left us last year, and now that function is shifted to an outside consultant. So the DPW water, that's all about the purchase of water this year. About a hundred and six thousand dollars extra we had to absorb in buying the water, and that was because of the, because of the Southborough share. There's actually two reasons for that. It was because of the cost of the water went up and the Southborough share shifted a little bit unfavorably, so it was like a double whammy for Karen and the water department. The building department, the building department's made a very good case. Their permitting and permitting volume has grown quite a bit the last several years. As you can see, two hundred and twenty-five additional permits they're processing. Unfortunately, Mr. Roberto, the inspector, has been spending more time, more significant time in office than out on the, out in the field where he can be more useful to the town, so we thought fifteen hours weekly that he requested was reasonable, and again, we'll reevaluate that next year to see how we can incorporate that with the functions there. Youth and family department, they've turned over both the assistant director, who is now the director, and obviously, the director is now retired, so they've had quite a year, and they had asked for some new administrative hours too, so about, it's an odd amount, but about seven point seven hours weekly they budgeted for some administrative work there. It just made sense after Laurie's and Sarah's presentations that they, you know, they had been spending too much time on administrative work, so that's a good thing for them. The library department, new programming for cultural events, and some of the CWMR's annual assessment money that we pay went up this year, so there was a little bit of an increase. And materials, the materials should be ninety percent of the budget per the state standards, so we're getting in line with that also. For personnel, they hired three new pages while eliminating a part-time associate, as you can see, so that is reflected in the seventeen budget, and Mr. Donovan is trying to make some changes there to kind of make things a little more efficient down at the library. The board of selectmen department, your own department, there are ten hours for the executive assistant added for next year. As you know, Ms. Calery is a part-time thirty-hour person currently, so there's a very good chance that that position may be changed next year as to, as to the exact, you know, likelihood of it. We're pretty sure that that's going to happen, so we're, Mr. Purple's planning on that, and so we thought that that was prudent to do. The employee training for the department has also increased slightly to provide two trainings per year. They're not very much, but they're very useful, so. And a contractual line item for the town administrator was added to better account for the deferred compensation insurance obligations for those obligations. We've actually honored those obligations, it's just the accounting for them is a little more in line with what the state wants us to do. So if we go to the school department, the K to eight, the one point eight oh that they, full-time equivalents, that they are increasing their staffing, is spread, as I mentioned, is spread over the four different, over four different job functions. I think it's an English, English learning function and a couple of other admin functions. So the budget's up two point six one percent. Full-day kindergarten, as you've read and heard about, is not in the seventeen budget. There are ongoing discussions beyond that, so there'll be more to come on that topic next year. I'm sure it'll be discussed at length. Algonquin has asked for an increase of one point two staff, not a whole lot there. Student support services, Southborough's share of the costs, as you know, fluctuates a little bit every year, it was forty-one point one six percent this year. We were on the right side of the enrollment this year, so the regional assessment was very reasonable. And the renovation debt obligations are also decreasing slightly, very slightly, by about five thousand dollars. That's the debt we pay for their renovations in their assessment. The Assabit assessment, as I mentioned, fifty-nine percent, it's about a hundred and twenty-three thousand. The capital, again, just to repeat what I had said, it's due to the renovations, about fifty thousand of that hundred and twenty-three thousand is, are the capital assessments, and so it's five students extra that we gained in that assessment. Norfolk County agricultural budget, this is one we haven't dealt with in quite a while since FY ten, so it's been about five or six years, six years. One student is planning to attend this year, so by law, the town has to fund the tuition and the transportation, so we are, we are planning for that and have that in the budget. The benefits budget includes the following items, health, dental, life insurance for active and retired employees, workers' compensation, unemployment, our retirement assessment to Worcester Regional, and Medicare, our share of the federal Medicare tax. So additionally, we include our OPEB amount of our two hundred and fifty thousand, which is in there, and we've had some unexpected adverse claims this past year, unfortunately, no one likes to ever see that. So the expected rate renewal rate now for July first of sixteen, because as you know, they run fiscal year for our active employees, is nine point five percent. It's a little high for our Tufts. The town does have two carriers, Tufts and Fallon. Fallon is about four percent right now, so we are negotiating that. We hope to see progress with that. This is one of the areas I'm hoping to see come down to a reasonable.
Ceiling?
Yes, that will be the ceiling. Yes, that'll be the ceiling.
I assume ten percent is, would have to be the ceiling.
Absolutely. You know, insurance, again, I probably say this every year, but it's a very interesting thing because you see it fluctuate so much from, you know, you'll have years where you get a surprise and it's two or three percent. And then the next year you hear of towns getting whacked with ten, twelve, fifteen, these horrible. It's just amazing and the amount of dollars is, it's unfortunate. The capital budget, this is an actual department, as you know, that we, this is the third year of having items in that, in that budget. So it consists of nine items for five departments, which are about half a million dollars. Very close to what last year was. I think it was four hundred and eighty thousand or somewhere around that area last year. So again, having that sort of level is a good thing. And the detail will be in the warrant and in the budget report. I believe you may have copies of some papers with that in, in the detail in there tonight. The legal settlement with Northborough, you probably don't even want to hear about this. But as you know, last year this was settled, so we're on an eight-year payback period to Northborough. This will just be an annual thing. I'll just probably mention two hundred and twenty thousand dollars or very close to there annually we'll be paying to them. So that is now in our budget though. That's the good news and it's, it's there to sort of stay, stay with us the next six, seven years. This is the capital request, a little small to read. But as you know, it's, it's comprised of sort of diff, number of different things from different departments. You've seen most of this before. There may be a few tweaks to what we had last time. I guess I'll just mention that it's pretty close again to last, the overall dollar amount of last year. But the thing to keep in mind is the funding source of these items sometimes are non-tax levy. And I tried to point them out by the water fund, the ambulance fund, the assessors software is the overlay fund. So there's all sorts of different sources. You can pay for things sometimes within town. Legals, you know, obviously you have to have a legal reason to do it. But not all, not all things are raised by taxation. So there's a couple of borrowing articles in here also, which will be paid back over time. So even though it's one point three million that we have in borrowing articles, over time it'll be, you know, you will portion that out. So it's so much a year and we won't know that amount until we actually do it. So just keep that in mind because it can be, people look at it and say, we're spending two point two million or two point three million on capital. Which we are, but we're not, we are over time, but we're, we're not all at once.
Just a quick, the townhouse copier, thirteen thousand dollars for a copier?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Sounds like, sounds like a lot for a copier.
Sounds like Mr. Semino's comment last time.
If you recall, I mean, we buy it, we lease, we don't lease, we...
We haven't actually vetted the, the copier. We've been having more and more problems with it this year. So as far as a buyer, there'd probably be a, well, I, I don't know yet if it'll be a buyer or lease. It's kind of a, an estimate. But thirteen thousand dollars honestly for a high-volume copier that scans and does some other things is probably in the, in the ballpark, believe it or not. Because we're getting a little more than a copier.
Just don't say it's probably in the ballpark. Say, yeah, that's the number.
That's the number.
Question?
Yep.
Brian, I'm, I, my shop, I'm reading, are it, the street sweeper and the second item?
Toolcat. The toolcat.
Is that one of, one of the same?
So you, can you repeat her question?
Is it an adapter to the sweeper?
No, the toolcat's like a bobcat. I've been, it's been explained to me. So it's two different, two different items. The reason we put it in the same one, to be honest, it, the estimate is two hundred and thirty thousand and sixty-five thousand. The reason is, is because the price fluctuation between the two. One might be a little short, one might be a little high. It just was, if we go to purchase, it'll make it a little easier rather than if you had them separately and then you're stuck. That's all. And that'll be detailed a little more in the budget, I should say, in the budget report to separate the two to show the difference. So current issues, these are just things going on that we thought to note. Town buildings disposition, I think the board already had a briefing on this and made some decisions on Station Two and Fable Hall and possibly getting rid of them. So we're gonna look into that and hopefully get the approval to do that. As time goes on, we do need to evaluate South Union Station or the Arts Center a little more. As far as Mr. Parent goes, he does see some things that'll need to be done there as the years go on. So within the next several years. So there'll be, there'll have to be more discussion on that building also. As a result of some of these discussions, the DPW needs to construct a small building for equipment storage. So that is on the capital article this year for thirty-eight thousand. It's a little metal building. It's not a huge, anything huge, but that is necessary. The public safety facility is moving along. Again, I believe the board is familiar with this for the people at home. This is a long, long issue that's almost ten years now. We've, we've been kind of studying a, a new public safety facility. So we've narrowed down the options. I'm sure the board is aware of that. And discussions going on the next few months should, should start to narrow that, that whole, that whole subject quite a bit. So non-tax levy financial issues, only because there's a lot of water projects going on, we thought to mention this, such as there's pipe cleaning and lining and, and root, the root nine water replacement, that's been ongoing. So just wanted to mention that. The Burnett House, we've already mentioned that tonight previously. But that again is CPC is considering and we'll see if that can make it on the warrant. The town website and the IT structure, the new website was implemented this year. We're actually gonna be tweaking it as we go further on and people get a little more familiar with what they can do with it. So we made a good start and there's more, more to do there. And the IT director, which I've already talked about a little bit, but there's a transition that we'll be doing these next two years. Other than that, that's the, the high-level overview. I think, you know, any questions you have, we can answer them. But it was, it was a fairly good year. Like I said, the tax increase did come down to two point six five percent. Again, I think, as Mr. Rooney said before, that should be the high. I don't see that going up, only down. And, and, and the departments were great working with us. We, there's some things next year we'll be looking at for capital that we, we called out, as we do every year, for some things that we've, we thought might be able to wait. So the tax rate is projected to be sixteen point two four next year. We'll see when the tax rate's set how that goes. But, but overall, it, it came out a little better than I think. We were, we were a little nervous at the beginning, but it, it worked out.
I commend you, Mr. Ballantyne, Mr. Purple, and all the department heads for creating a budget that once again is, is certainly workable based upon the increasing cost of municipal services. I'll open up to the board if they have any questions.
I have a couple of quick ones.
Mr. Semino.
With regard to staffing, increase in staffing of a total of four point three. Is there, I'll direct this to either Mr. Ballantyne or Mr. Purple. Is there any, is there any knowledge or planning this year of notwithstanding a four point three overall increase of reducing heads, you know, for reasons other than retirement? That's just yes or no. I'm not asking for details at this point.
No.
Mark. No?
No.
No? Okay. I, you, you mentioned that we had this discussion last year about benefits. And I, we did actually. We, we, last year we faced a tremendous initial, I want to say, almost double-digit increase from tufts. I don't know if we beat that back and now we're, we're back looking at it. Or did you mention this was not to tufts?
We did beat it back and the reason is because the claim finalized this year. It didn't end up finalizing last year and now it has finalized.
Is any of the data we saw tonight, in your mind, to the extent you can even say, likely to affect the, the town's newly minted AAA bond rating?
Um, no, I don't think so. We're not taking any out of reserves. We've maintained our, our tax levy just about, I mean, I'm sorry, our unused excess levy. And with the increase that we, we, there's some discipline here. So I think, I think that's what they look for, discipline and, and, you know, just being stable financially. I, I think we're there. No.
No, that's good. I think it's just important for people to hear that. So that's all I have, Mr. Rooney.
Mr. Shea.
Yep, the ACABET school increase, I know you touched upon the number of additional students that we're gonna have going this year. But the capital assessment as well, I recall from when it came to us years ago for this project, isn't our share of the capital or our percentage share of it locked in based on the enrollment at the time the article went through?
That's correct.
So despite the increase in enrollment now, our proportional share of the capital is not increasing.
Correct.
Even though the dollar amount may increase.
Correct, you're correct. And this is the, this is the, I believe this is, I, I, I take that back. I can't say that. I was gonna say this, this is the year that it's the highest, but I can't say that because usually that year one is the highest. But I'm not sure they caught the whole year, so I'd have to look at that. But, but you are right.
Okay. And you didn't touch on it here, but I noticed in going through the budgets that were submitted, town clerk budgets in the past had three numbers assigned, like lines one sixty, one sixty-one, one sixty-two. And it appears that they have been grouped together, consolidated into one. And I just want to be sure that we explain that properly. Because, I mean, there have been a number of times where we try to simplify things and do what we think is right that leads to a forty-five minute discussion on the town meeting floor.
So, yeah, so Mr. Mr. Hegarty, they always say not to reinvent the wheel. But Mr. Hegarty has reinvented the wheel. And, and I'm not saying it's a bad thing. And we've had discussions with the town accountant about taking the elected town clerk piece, the elections and registrations budget, and the town clerk budget, and, and putting them all under one budget. In the budget report that will be distributed within the next week to ten days, that will have explanation in there. It will show those three existing budgets, but it will have an explanation under elections and registration as well as elected town clerk, that that has all now been consolidated under one, under one budget.
It'll be a nice summary so people can compare.
Very nice summary.
Previous years, total.
Exactly. So you'll see the staffing. You'll, if you recall last year's document, it had three years of staffing totals. It will have all of those staffing totals, but will show zero. And then, and then the, the budget history as well. And it will show zero. And it will explain that this has all been shifted to the town clerk budget. So we'll keep that for this year, for the transition piece of it. And then assuming that we have no issues with it, then next year, those other two budgets will disappear.
And just the last comment I had, you had touched upon the additional police officer and noticed in the police department budget that the overtime line had gone up, which seems counterintuitive to adding additional people. And you had mentioned a strong presentation that the chief had made to the advisory committee. I'm wondering if we can just impose upon the chief for a brief explanation for the additional officer and perhaps an explanation for why the overtime amount is going up?
His presentation was very good, by the way.
Basically, we're increasing the service. So it's not like we're adding somebody to, to fill in. We want to get to a level where on second and third shift, we have three offices scheduled every night instead of two. And I think the line item went up a little bit just to cover contractual anticipated raises. But adding the one officer won't cut the overtime like, like it did the, the last time they hired a new officer. So we're basically increasing the service.
One of the other pieces I just want to add, because like I said, the chief is just giving you a quick, he, as Brian says, he did a very nice presentation and with advisory as well. You know, this is, this is also about service. This is about officer safety and, and having, you know, when the third shift, you know, there's a number of incidences that they would, you know, they may encounter that they wouldn't encounter on the day shift when you have more people on shift. Also, I think the chief is taking advantage of some staffing changes. You know, we have a pending retirement of a longtime employee, which is going to open up a little bit of room in that budget. He's reducing his reserve officer line item a little bit. So when you take a look at his overall budget, and he's adding an officer, but his overall budget's only going up three percent, it's a little bit misleading that you're able to add another person, it's only three percent. If we added the second person, Brian can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it was eight percent, that we would increase his budget now. The chief, you know, made a very good case, you know, to add another person. And, you know, at advisory, it was kind of like we were in a, in an auction, you know? All of a sudden, you know, it was one guy and then it was three guys. And then it was, you know, and I mean, one of the things we took a look at with all the departments was, you know, first of all, as Brian says, it was a little bit tough at the beginning of the budget season. How, you know, we need to maintain what we've got now. Okay, that's the first step. The next step is, what do you need? So we looked at what the departments all need. And then it got to the nice-to-have level. And, you know, and, and when the chief came in, you know, it was, I need one officer and this is why. It would be nice to have two, but, you know, I think that, you know, he's willing to, we'll do one. You know, we'll evaluate that and then I think make a stronger case to come back, you know, next year and take a look at potentially adding another officer, which would give him that same three officer coverage on the second and third shift.
And just lastly, from the discussions you've had to date with the advisory committee, do you see any major differences on budgets? Or do you think we'll be heading in pretty much agreement on budgets to town?
I was just gonna bring them up since you had mentioned them. They have not taken any official votes. I will say, and Mr. Purple can contradict me if he thinks, but I will say they've been very, very good at listening to all the departments. I haven't heard any major disagreements unless they're a little waiting for us in the weeds. But so far, there has not been any major disagreements. Bear in mind, they still have to go through next week, their meeting, and their meeting with the school departments. So they haven't gone through them. They haven't gone through some of the other departments. I think they're meeting with Council on Aging in the library. So there are some departments they have not heard from. Their schedule's still ongoing, but so far, so good.
And they're not taking positions until the end. At least that's been, that's, that's what they've stated. So they're not taking positions on any departments or the budget as a whole until they're all done with their process. So, and their process, the end of their process is gonna come up very tight to the warrant going to print. So we'll try and get as many recommendations from them to be included so that we don't have at-town meeting on, on everything.
Brian, can you talk about free cash a little bit more and the change from sixteen to seventeen and what you may see or what you might expect from seventeen to eighteen?
The, the reason for the, for the decrease from sixteen to seventeen, it is substantial, is basically two things, snow and ice, as you remember last year. So funny, now this year is, is very different, but last year was a disaster. And we funded that last year within the budget, that year's budget. We didn't spend over and raise it like we could. It's a little more prudent to do that. It's a good idea if you can, so we did do it. The, the problem with that is it leaves less money at the end of the year to be counted for extra money or free cash. The other half of that is the budgets were tight last year. Some years you see this fluctuation of, of budgets being, basically what happens is all the budgets are aggregated at the end of the year and residual amounts flow into free cash because they're, they're unused amounts. Last year, there happened to be very few departments, even the bigger ones, that had any money left over. That's a good thing in the sense that, that people are using their money and budgeting what they thought they would use. But in a budget like, say, the benefits budget where we've had years by itself where it's been two or three hundred thousand dollars left over. Last year, I think it was under fifty thousand. It was, it wasn't that much at all. It was just tight. So all that adds up to take a hit on, on the, on the following year. So as far as next year, I would hope it would be at that level or a little higher. It, it's really hard to gauge, especially at this time of year. We do look at the revenues each year. The accountant, the administrator, myself, a few times during the year, will look at the revenues. But some of them don't come in until the, the spring or late winter time. So you kind of get a hard, it's difficult to sometimes gauge it. But they see, what I'm sensing is that they're fairly, as, at least as strong as last year. least as strong as last year, so I don't think we'll lose again. That's the good news.
Thank you, Brian.
Sure.
Another question.
Mrs. Fann.
The police department chief, it's two offices on the third shift. Could, do you have two now?
I think there was some miscommunication on what was put up there. Actually, with, with one officer, what I'm gonna do is get the best of both worlds, so it'll be a swing shift, so it'll be seven at night, roughly three in the morning, and, so we'll get four hours on the third shift of an extra officer, and also four hours on the, the night shift, so that's how I'm gonna institute it. When we add, hopefully, one more next year, then we can revisit the staffing levels that I had talked about in the presentation.
Okay. I'd hate to think we had a single officer on duty at any one time.
No, that's not the case.
Thank you.
Is your budget posted somewhere that you can, so can you update it with that information?
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? Any comments from the audience?
That's intended.
Yeah, yeah.
This is the nice presentation that Mr. Purple put together last year that was very helpful to myself, and I know a lot of other people, and, and it, I, I still have it from last year to compare, and it was done March 3rd last year, so I wanted to make sure we, all of us town meeting-goers would have this at our disposal this year as well.
Absolutely. The, the thing we tried to avoid this year, and you, and that's the first version you have, the, there was a second version that was done March 25th, and it was a tremendous amount of work, and actually, you were the reason for the tremendous amount of work, because you wanted some more detail put into it, which made absolute sense, so then we added some more detail for all the budgets in, and, and so we've got all that set up now, we're just getting that all set, so instead of a March 3rd, March 25th, it'll probably be more like a March 12th, one time, all done. And last time, I made a ton of copies, and I think six people were here, so we'll do it once, we'll have them out for town meeting, we'll have it up online, so that everybody has that information. Absolutely. We didn't create it just as a one-time thing, so.
Mr. Stivers.
Sam Stivers, Seven Presidential Drive, advisory committee member, but speaking as a private citizen. First, I commend Mr. Purple for the presentation and the booklet that he did last year, and I hope that we continue, Mr. Ballantyne, as well, to, to do the, the thing, because that was very helpful. I was one of the six, I think, that was there, but, thank you. I have a question about the, the rec department pilot fee. I'm still trying to figure out, we haven't talked about that yet at advisory, I'm trying to figure out what's going on with that this year. It seems to have disappeared or been bundled someplace, so I'd ask advisory to talk to rec about it, or the effort to figure out what the proposal is, and I thought we, as last year, had beaten that one to death and concluded that ultimately it ought to go into the user fees, excuse, excuse me, go into the town budget rather than user fees, and that, given that we're renegotiating the DCR contract this year, it would seem to be an opportunity to change the contract language that previously required that to, to come out of the user fees, so, since we put that in there initially, as I understand it. So what's the current state of play on that one? Just curious.
The, 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 I believe, and, and again, Mr. Purple can correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the old contract, is really this contract, hasn't been updated yet, correct?
Permit, that's correct.
Right, so we're still bound by the, that language of paying it out of the user fees until that is renegotiated, is the way I understand it.
When do we think that's gonna take effect, the new contract? We're talking FY '17 now, so.
Could be.
It, it could be in '17. We had this discussion at the last meeting, and Mr. Mr. Hegarty was part of that, you know, as you're aware, the special legislation has passed.
Right.
DCR was very, I'll say, amenable to the discussions. They didn't, they didn't, you know, put their foot in the door on, on a lot of it, and it went through, and now we have to sit down, and now we have to negotiate a new, a new lease. We still have the five-year permit in place for another couple of years if something were to happen with that lease. The intention is to get a lease in place as soon as possible. I am not overly optimistic it's going to happen very quickly. That doesn't mean, you know, we're, we're already trying to set up a meeting with DCR to try and sit down, have initial discussions about that, but I, I think to Mr. Ballantyne's point, you know, until there is something different for us to, for us to do, then we're still kind of bound by the, the funding source as identified in the, in the existing permit.
Yeah, I, I think I, I might have a different interpretation of that. I, I do think we need to renegotiate the language such that it is not, it does not direct us to make those payments based upon user fees, and I also think that we, we have some flexibility to do it now.
Sooner.
Rather than waiting for that negotiation, so my, my suggestion and my recommendation, and I talked with Mr. Purple before this, and again, we may not agree on it, but it would be to increase the recreation budget by $9,000.
Okay.
And not put that burden on the users, which would then increase their hourly permit fee to an area that is not competitive with other institutions, so we are not going to get the type of usage, so that's kind of where I would come from on that.
Okay.
I don't know if advisory would buy into that.
We haven't discussed it this year, but we did beat it last year pretty hard, and again, I'm not suggesting that we need a decision on this now, I was just curious, I hadn't seen where that was, so thanks for the explanation, and I'm sure advisory will talk about that.
Sam, I share some of your same concerns. I don't think we should be exposing a number when we're negotiating something. It should be in a general, I don't know, miscellaneous, not miscellaneous, but a contract service account. I have a problem when a number is being exposed for everyone to read before we negotiate it or anything, even though the contract exists now, it almost says it's got, we have the ability to pay.
Right. Okay, thank you. Don't want to get offline here, but just curious where that was. Thank you.
Anything further?
So can we make a motion to put it into the recreation budget for now?
Yeah.
$9,000?
If you would.
Just did.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
So you want, so that's gonna be funded now out of general fund revenue, correct?
Unidentified in our account, in the board of selections budget, a number if possible, or general fund, however you can.
What do you recommend?
Without demonstrating a number.
Well, we know what the number is.
Again, no, we know what the number is, because it's in the permit, so it's not like we're showing our hand and, and demonstrating that we can't pay it because we're required to pay it, so.
All right, well, you use your best judgment.
Well, my best judgment would be that it'd be funded out of, you know, a recreation revolving fund, but...
The recreation revolving fund, it's not the recreation, it's the 911 revolving fund, has $150,000 in it, and, and I've heard more about this $9,000, and I can't quite figure out why, because, to be honest, next year, when we do the 911 field, we can always pay general fund money towards that. I, so you always have that option, so it's, it seems a little strange that I've heard so much discussion about this $9,000, but in the end, it doesn't really matter, and, and the agreement says it has to be paid out of that, so, I just, I'm a little lost on it, but if that's what the board wants.
Mr. Hegarty.
No, on another matter.
Oh, okay.
Guess that's what the board wants.
Anything further?
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Hegarty.
Could I just comment briefly on the question that Mr. Shea asked? This is for the benefit of the users, viewers at home, really, that don't understand the accounting nuances here. When I became the clerk, there are three separate budgets, but the people in the clerk's office work on all the same stuff together, and what I found is that accounts were used based upon what dollars were left in one account, so it just didn't make any sense. Maybe once upon a time, 30, 40, 50 years ago, it made sense to have three separate accounts, but it's really, it was just overly burdensome. That's why I asked the town accountant if we could just combine these things, it makes it a lot simpler. So that's all it really was, it's like having three separate checkbooks, you know, one bill would come in one month, you paid out of one, and the same expense, same type of expense, same type of people go out of the other. It just made sense to put it all together. That's just simplicity for everybody, that's what really was going on.
And the staff was split up, and they, they really, in essence, share the staff. It didn't really make sense. I mean, we all agreed, it was kind of a, kind of a nice little thing that he, he recommended, so I think that's just more efficient.
So with that revision to the recreation budget, I would recommend that this board, that we make a motion to approve this budget, and we'd be done with this for this year.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also move with this point.
Thank you, Hi.
That we close the warrant, because we talked about, we voted in terms of opening it, and now that we've finished this budget discussion, I'd move that we close the warrant.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The last item here is on the consent agenda. Mr. Semino.
My goodness. Mr. Chairman, I move that the board vote to reappoint Mark A. Spruill to South Board Emergency Planning Committee, Sarah Title III as emergency management specialist, term indefinitely.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The board is going to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law 30, Large A, Section 21, and not returning to open session. The issues to be discussed are to consider the purchase of real property exemption number six, as the chair has determined that having the discussion in an open session may be detrimental to the public body's negotiation, and two, negotiation with non-union personnel exemption number two requires a roll call. Vote Rooney aye.
Semino aye.
Colanda aye.
Aye.
Hannah?
Shea aye.
We are in executive session.